So, good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the Chair of the Arlington zoning Board of Appeals. I'm calling this meeting of the Board to order. I'd confirm all members and anticipated officials are present. Members of the zoning Board of Appeal, Roger DuPont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Kevin Mills.
Here.
John O'Rourke. John, I believe, is on the, is on by phone. Stephen Redlack.
Here.
Aaron Ford. Before we formally open the hearing, I will confirm that John and Aaron are present. About the town, Rick Valerally.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Good evening. And Kelly Lineham is here from the Department of Planning and Development.
Good evening.
Good evening. Don't believe Vincent Lee is with us tonight.
I'm right here.
Oh, you're there. Oh, good. Good to have you as well. Consultants of the Board, Paul Haverty.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Haverty. And I have a beta group, Marty Novar.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Also with me tonight is Tyler DeRuder and Dennis Flynn, both professional traffic operations engineer, and Bill McGrath, professional engineer civil.
Perfect. Thank you all. And on behalf of the applicant, Stephanie Kiefer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Kiefer. How are you?
I'm well. I'm well. And the applicant has with them this evening, I believe, our full suite. So, we have Gwen Noys and Art Quetzal of Oak Tree, John Hessian, our engineer, Derek Roach, our traffic engineer, Scott Blasak from Bruce Hamilton Architectural Team, and housing consultant Bob Engler, I believe, is here. I think that's everyone on the team this evening.
Thank you. So, this open meeting of the Arlington zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021. This act includes an extension until April 1, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, which suspended the requirement to hold all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to continue to participate remotely. Public bodies may continue to meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. An opportunity for public participation will be provided during the public comment period during each public hearing. For this meeting, the Arlington zoning Board of Appeals has convened a video conference via the Zoom app with online and telephone access as listed on the agenda posted to the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded, and it will be broadcast by ACMI. Please be aware that attendees are participating by a variety of means. Some attendees are participating by video conference, others are participating by computer audio or by telephone. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, your screen name, or another identifier. Please take care to not share personal information. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We ask you to please maintain decorum during the meeting, including displaying an appropriate background. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body, are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda, and as Chair, reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting, but we only have one item on this evening's meeting. Before we start in on that, I saw that Aaron Ford is with us. Aaron, good to see you.
Steve, I'm like.
Not a problem. And is Mr. O'Rourke on?
He is, Mr. Chairman.
He is. Perfect. Thank you. Excellent. So, on our posted agenda, this brings us to item number two, the continuation of Thorndike Place. Turning to comprehensive permit hearing for Thorndike Place at the prior hearing on June 29, 2021, the discussion focused on aspects of proposed senior independent living building for Thorndike Place, where several questions and concerns raised during the hearing and several parties, including the applicant, town departments, and peer review engineers requested additional time to properly respond to those questions and concerns. At the July 13, 2021 hearing, the board voted to extend the public hearing period and continue the hearing to this evening. The board has received revised documents from the applicant, the board's peer review consultants, town departments, and town committees and commissions. Those have been posted to the website and to the agenda. There were some that came in very late this afternoon. Those have been added to the bottom of the agenda. The plan for tonight's hearing is to have a presentation from the applicant outlining the changes from the prior proposal, board's peer review consultants, and town departments, so they may be invited to comment. The board will proceed with its questions, and then we will then open the hearing for public comment. So, with that, I will turn to Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Good evening, members of the board. I'm sure you are very familiar with our team this evening, and I think you'll be hearing from each of them in some fashion. So, as the chairman had indicated when we, at the last hearing, there had been a submission, submissions that had come in on about August 2nd or 3rd, and those were into the record. But since that time, there was an opportunity for Beta Peer to review those and provide their comments, which they did on honor of August 17. And then for town comments came in through a consolidated town memo letter dated August 23, and then the Arlington Conservation Commission likewise submitted their seventh comment letter on August 23. And since that time, we collected that, and we submitted on the 31st of August, BSC submitted its complete set of site plans. So, previously, we had done updates, and perhaps four sheets of the full set had been updated. But on August 31, Beta incorporated the prior tweaks and modifications we had discussed, as well as responding to comments that had been raised that were very helpful in both the Beta Civil Peer Review and as well as the town, the town staff kind of collective comment level of August 23. So, that came in on August 20, August 31, pardon me, together with the updated stormwater, together with the four sheets of truck turning profiles, and trying to think what else we had come in. Updated stormwater. The updated civil design sheets. And the turning profiles. And when we get to John, he'll correct me if I'm missing one. Then, three days later, on September 2, the applicant submitted, that was our filing deadline, we submitted a response letter to the town's comment letter. We submitted the applicant's response letter to the Arlington Conservation Commission's letter. We submitted the applicant's response to Beta's waiver review. We submitted VAI's response to Beta's traffic review. And I should comment the two documents that I missed that BSC had submitted on the 31st had been BSC's response to Beta's civil and wetlands review, and Beta's response to the town's comments that pertain to civil and wetlands matters. And then we submitted the updated waiver list with, there was really no update to that other than correcting that the requested waiver for parking was 95 spaces. I believe it previously said 96. So, with that full suite of documents that have been provided, I think the one thing, and it may come out once you hear from John, and from Derek, from Scott, um, the project really hasn't changed. But what we've done is we've provided, and I think, Mr. Hanlon, you had requested this, you had said at one point that you just wanted to see what, what everything was for the current proposal and to kind of have it in one big chunk. And so, here we have with us this evening the full set of civil, the full set of architectural, all of the responses to the professionals, whether it's Beta Peer Review or the town staff professionals that have commented, updated stormwater, updated traffic. So, that whole suite of materials is there, and we responded to everything. If there are any lingering questions or comments, we're happy and very happy to address those tonight. But before we, I turn it over, I will first turn it over to just a review of the civil to John. Just a reminder, as we've all been here for so long, kind of how this project has evolved. And back in 2016, we were looking at a 219-unit multifamily project with 12 duplex units. And, and, and that was before the board, when it came back in November of 2020. And we kind of proceeded along that until the fall of 2020. And we went to 176-unit multifamily project. And, and that had been revised and tweaked, and we had changed kind of how the building like graduated, but it was, it was 176 units. And then, in response to the board's request, in just this past May, we looked at the reintroduction of the townhouses, and we, you know, further reduced kind of the building. And that's when we're, we are where we are today. So, we have the 12 townhouse units, the behind that, the senior living 124 unit. And the project has a very defined kind of development footprint, if you will. And one of the other additional submissions I should have mentioned, the engineering packet, is we've provided the board kind of that line of where we're proposing the conservation parcel. And so, it would be 12 acres. And we're pretty, we're pretty satisfied with that. It keeps the development within a small footprint, and it leaves like a little restoration woodland area right behind it. And then it has 12 acres of conservation land. And so, without further ado, I think I will turn, turn it over now to John Hessian. He can walk you through the updates, so, oh, I don't think we've really changed the project, but we've updated. And from there, I would ask that Derek Roach likewise give the update on traffic, and then we'll turn it over to Scott to walk through the architectural updates.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. I am going to share my screen if that's okay, and I have permission, it looks like I have permission to do that.
Please.
So, I will start off by saying that Stephanie pretty much covered most of what I was going to cover. So, I won't go into a whole lot of detail, but, you know, from a big picture perspective, Stephanie is accurate from the, as it relates to the site plan, not much has changed over the past couple of months. What we did was exactly what Stephanie said, and I had it in my notes, and I think it was Mr. Hanlon that the phrase I put in my notes was a, you know, restated application. So, what we've done is we've submitted full site plans, stormwater report, and other supporting exhibits, the vehicle turning exhibits. The one thing that Stephanie, you, you left off your lift, list was, you caught it at the end there, was the proposed conservation parcel exhibit, and now I've forgotten one of the exhibits, but that'll come back to me. So, what we submitted was a final compilation of responses to Beta's August 18 peer review letter. And as Stephanie said, the town department comments that were dated August 23. I will say that in our response back in early August, we said that we would have revised materials back in on, I believe it was the 24th or 25th of, it was the 24th of August. But where we received the pretty comprehensive town comments on the 23rd, the day before, we felt it was prudent to submit, you know, one final revised responsive, you know, to use Mr. Hanlon's words, restated application. So, that's why those revised materials weren't submitted until the 31st. It gave us the opportunity to sift through the town department comments and try to be fully responsive to those. What I, so, and I said there, there were really no substantive changes to the site plans. Most of the responses were what I would call dotting the i's and crossing the t's. You know, utility connections in the street, what Public Works wanted or engineering wanted from the town. We addressed those cleanup items in the revised drawings. But a few things I do want to highlight, and I have, you know, a colored version of the landscape planting plan up on the screen here. But a couple of things, there, there were comments from, I believe, from Beta and from the town regarding the number of bicycle parking spaces. I just wanted to highlight that, you know, we've always had a bicycle storage area on this northern wall of the senior living building. That's approximately 60 feet long, or it is 60 feet long, and will house 28 bicycles. Our previous version of the site plan, we showed one exterior bike rack for visitors at the main entrance to the senior living. In response to some of those comments, we've added a second bike rack for a total of 12 bicycle spaces by the main entry to the senior living building. And what we're looking at here, we, in the past, we had provided updated, you know, layout of materials, grading and drainage, and utility drawings. But as part of this revised package that was submitted on the 31st, we've updated the landscaping plan that had last been updated in November, based on a previous iteration of the project. But this plan has been updated based on the 12 duplex ownership units in the 124-unit senior living development proposal. What, one thing that Stephanie mentioned, one thing that I wanted to point out is in the area between really what I'll call like the development footprint. So, the limit of the emergency vehicle access drive out to our proposed parcel boundary, but not including the 25-foot, no disturb to the, to the bordering vegetated and, and isolated vegetated wetlands. A woodland restoration plan that will include the removal of invasive species. So, obviously, let me step back. Within the development footprint, we're going to be removing invasive species and downed, downed trees and, and things of that nature to clean up the site, to prepare it for the proposed development. But outside of that footprint and within, you know, the limits of the proposed development parcel, you know, the applicant is proposing to do this woodland restoration, removal of invasives, removal of that down timber that's not providing any habitat value or is a, you know, a hazard in some way. And then revegetating with the appropriate native species that will provide, you know, better wildlife and habitat and a better, I'm not a woodland restoration expert, but will provide a better diversity of vegetation in that area. And from the site visit that we had done back early in the summer with Emily Sullivan, a lot of this area has been trampled and is actually void of vegetation in the area where there was previously part of the homeless encampment. So, that's some, I think, a key thing that's been added that I wanted to point out. The vehicle turning movements have been provided, showing, you know, the Arlington ladder truck being able to circulate the entire perimeter of the project, and also to be able to turn up the main, what I'll call the cul-de-sac, to the main entrance of the senior living building. But kind of do a three-point turn and back out, and exit back out to Dorothy Road and Little John. We've also shown, provided turning exhibits for an ambulance. There was previously some discussion about the, the amount of the ambulances that may be needed here and to demonstrate that those can make that movement easily. Also, we've included a senior shuttle, a senior shuttle bus or jitney that's been proposed to be part of the kind of TDM program for the project. And lastly, we've included a template for a trash truck to demonstrate that, you know, trash and deliveries will be able to get to the, to the loading dock area. And, you know, I guess in a quick summary, that's, that's the extent of the, you know, site plan revisions. They're, they're really minimal. You can't see them. I will, since we have this pointed out, this area, I don't know that we've talked about it that much in previous meetings, but in previous iterations of the plan, there was surface, a surface parking lot on the western portion of the site. And this is now an exterior like amenity lawn, you know, community garden area for the residents of the senior living. You know, it'll, it'll have places to sit and read, and, and also some potential activities, and probably some, you know, people that want to, you know, get their fingernails dirty and do a little vegetable or flower gardening. And then, you know, kind of in summary, you know, we received an updated or a new peer review letter from Beta dated yesterday, September 8, as a review of the, all the revised site plan materials that we submitted on the 31st. And I don't want to put words in their mouth, but my reading of it is that all outstanding comments have been addressed, with the exception of three, three items that they, Beta has actually pointed out could be handled as conditions if the, if the board so chose, and we would agree with that. One was the additional test pits to determine seasonal high groundwater, and we've discussed that in the past, and the applicant has committed to do that as a condition of approval in the past. Also, they've mentioned a construction management plan. And again, we've, can, we've discussed that in the past and agreed that that would be provided in coordination with town departments and police and fire prior to any building permit being issued for the project. And then lastly, they had a comment with respect to including a note regarding snow storage in the long-term operations and management plan for the project. And that could easily be accomplished prior to building permit also. So, I do have, you know, all the turning templates and full set of plans and, and the conservation parcel exhibit, if there's any questions. But I wanted to keep it brief and to the point. So, I'll hand it over to, I guess, Derek to talk a little bit about traffic.
All right. Thanks, John. Hi, this, I'm Derek Roach, professional engineer, senior transportation engineer with Anassen Associates. Thanks for having me tonight. I'll talk a little bit about the updates that we've done to traffic since we were here last. We updated the trip generation to match the, the current proposal of the senior living and the 12 townhouse units. In that trip generation, based on comments from both Beta and the town, we addressed the mode split concerns that the senior living facility wouldn't you have the same mode split as the normal residents of the area, as the census data shows. But they would still have some sort of mode split. So, what we did is we took about half of, we took exactly half, 23%, and so we applied a non-auto reduction to those trips of 23% led to about four to five less trips in the peak hours compared to the previous. And that's about a 15% reductions in trips. So, based on that, we ran the analysis, and, and as Beta states in their letter, that the analysis is, is pretty much the same as previous with, with no, no real changes to what was previously presented. And the town's comment letter concurred that the approach of the mode split was acceptable and the right approach in their consideration. We did also provide, we provided the few auto turn analyses of the trucks getting down Little John in that analysis, in that letter that Beta reviewed and the town reviewed. And as John was saying, yesterday on the 8th, we received, or actually, we received it today, but it's dated the 8th from Beta with their final review of all the changes and the updated analysis and the figures and whatnot. And as far as, I don't want to, again, I don't want to put words in their mouth like John said, but as, as far as we're concerned, it seems all of the outstanding issues have been addressed and that they concur with the analysis as presented. And so, I don't want to, again, like John said, I don't want to belabor points that have, that we've already talked about here. So, I'll keep it short, and, and, you know, based on what we've heard from Beta and the town, it seems that all, all comments are addressed, and if that's not the case, we'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you, Derek. I think Derek's was probably the, kind of the, the most stale, if you will, because they had submitted their updated, I think, back in August, and it was kind of going back and forth a little bit. So, Beta's most, or pardon me, VAI's most recent submittal within the recent filing was just the response to the Beta Peer Review. So, there really wasn't any further traffic analysis that was submitted in the September package. But with that being said, if the board has any questions on the traffic, we can either have Derek field those now, or if you want to wait until we've done had all of our areas addressed in our presentation this evening.
Why don't you go ahead and, and complete the presentation?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then lastly, then, we will have Scott, if he could share his screen. And so, as kind of intro to Scott, so, in our September 2 submittal, we had provided updated architecturals that was, that responded to both comments that the board had previously, previously made, as well as comments made within the, the town's, the town staff combined public comment or comment letter. And one of the comments in there had been asking for additional information kind of on, on colors and materials for the design of the buildings, and they asked for additional perspectives. And so, as we had explained in our written responses on the 2nd, those, our vendor that does those, he couldn't do the turnaround fast enough, but we submitted kind of two-dimensionals within our response. And then earlier today, we received those, and so, we submitted those as part of the record. And Scott will be able to include that within his presentation. But just to let the board know, it's not any news, like, it's not any change to the design. It's just that we were waiting basically for the perspectives to come back in because of turnaround on that. So, with that said, Scott, if you could take the floor, please.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Scott Blasak from Bruce Hamilton Architects, and we are the project architects. So, as Stephanie has already said, there's really no changes. So, like John and Derek, I'll kind of keep my presentation as brief and focused to the newly submitted changes to the materials. So, starting with the site plan here, the three things really that I'll be talking about will be Uh, the three things really that I'll be talking about will be the, um. The changes to the colors and materials as Stephanie just said, and that happens on both the duplex townhouses along Dorothy Road. As well as to the main independent living building. Um, I'll be talking about a few just minor changes to the garage plan. And again, that's on the independent living building. And I'll be talking about, uh, just briefly about, uh, how we've indicated, um. A suggested distribution of the affordable units, um, throughout the independent living building and the. Um, duplex townhouses. But before I leave the site plan, uh, because we don't have it really indicated any other way, I'll start with just the duplex townhouses. Um, I do want to say the, the duplex townhouses will be completely identical, um, for the interiors and the exteriors in terms of architectural design. Finishes, uh, exterior materials, but, um, for now, you know, what we've designated is that there'd be three of these units that would be affordable. And so we've marked that as number, we've numbered them one through twelve, uh, starting at the west end here. So number two. Uh, is marked with AFU for affordable unit as an abbreviation. Uh, number six and number eleven. So, uh, as Stephanie just said, the new perspectives that we are submitting, I'll show you those next. Um, it's the same perspective, but maybe for those who haven't seen that perspective before. Um, where we're going to be standing is right about, um, say here on Dorothy Road, and we're going to be looking west. And the second perspective that I've prepared, um, tonight is looking at the main entrance of the independent living building. So right in this area here. Um, so I just wanted to use the site plan to kind of, um, set the table for those things. So. The first perspective here, um, I'm sure most of you have seen it before. Uh, this is looking west down Dorothy Road. And, uh, again, the main changes here are, uh, just illustrating some of the, um. Siding variations and color variations that we've, um, had submitted on the second. Uh, and those were shown on the two dimensional, uh, exterior elevations, which I will show you as well quickly, uh, before I conclude. Uh, the other changes to this perspective were really the landscape, uh, some of the minor landscape changes that John had mentioned. Um, there's a row of hedges out here at the street. Um, then the new landscape plan has more of just. Lawns that are more in keeping with the neighborhood, uh, low plantings along the buildings here. And then you can see the street trees would give that same rhythm, very similar to what was proposed before. And we've kind of showed those ghosted intentionally here so that, you know, again, you can see the architecture. The second, uh, perspective here is the, uh, main entrance of the independent living building. And, uh, the few things that I'll point out here, um, in addition to just being a general kind of orientation to how this entrance will work. You have the, uh, the turning circle, uh, that John and Derek had both talked about with respect to traffic. Circulation, drop off at the main entrance. Um, you have the main entrance itself, which has, uh, accent siding and a canopy. With some modest signage. Uh, and you can see the other areas of the building here where we've introduced some color, uh, variation. I think in our last submittal, we had more or less a consistent siding that wrapped around the entire, um. Building. So we, we had articulated the ground floor and the upper floor, but we hadn't really articulated how the sidings would break up. Uh, between those two. So we've done that, um, in both the two dimensional elevations. And in this, um, perspective. Couple of other things to point out quickly would be the bike, uh, bicycle racks, uh, for short-term parking that, uh, John had mentioned in his presentation. And, um. I, I, I think that's, um, that's really all for this perspective. So again, apologizing the delay in getting those to you, but I hope that. These are helpful in, in further describing the architecture and kind of the, the look and the feel of, of what it'll be like to, um. To be on the site in this, uh, view. So the next plan that I'm coming to here is the garage plan, um, that I, I won't really zoom in and show you everything, but a couple of things to, to mention and highlight. Um, it had been suggested previously that based on the population of the independent living building, there should probably be. Additional accessible parking spaces. So we have added those in this area. Uh, they are close to the core circulation areas like the elevators. Uh, we had also, um, been a little bit less specific in our last presentation about. Where the electric, uh, vehicle charging stations would be. So we've actually taken the time now to, um, label those individually. So. Um, we have, um. Ten spaces here, um, for electric vehicle charging, and those would be, um, built. Um, these, um, ten spaces here would be what we would call EV ready. So they'd be wired. Um, everything about the design and construction of the building would be anticipating that those could be installed. But maybe the, the charging stations themselves would not be installed. And it could simply be based on demand. Um, if the demand exists, then those would be set up to be. Uh, converted to EV ready, uh, spaces. As John mentioned, um, just to quickly review, this is the bicycle parking shed here, which has twenty-eight spaces. Um, the two bicycle parking space for short term near the main entrance that I just showed you in the perspective can. Have twelve bicycles. And then we also thought it might be appropriate to reserve a small area here near the. Entrance to the garage as a reserved area for additional bicycle parking. If there's became a need, uh, for example, with staff, um, that work at the building, um, that is an area that can easily be. Um, used for that purpose. So to that end, um, you know, John had pretty well summarized this, but we did add a bicycle, bicycle parking summary to the. Garage plan as well. Um, we also made a few additional notes to the parking summary here to basically. Uh, explain what, what I had just reviewed with, um. Accessible parking. I think that's it for, oh, and we, uh, the last thing on the, um, garage plan is there was a request to just clarify the length of the parking spaces. So we have added dimensions, um, the length of the space is eighteen feet as required by the. Um, zoning regulation. So we did clarify that and add a dimension. The next, um. Plan that I'll show. Is the floor plans, and this has to do with the distribution of affordable units. So what we've done to clarify that is to just basically indicate, um, I'll give you an example here. Uh, this unit is in yellow, um. And this unit is in yellow. The more intense yellow, we've kind of tried to pop those out to indicate where the affordable units. Are, uh, again, the intent is that the, the units are identical, uh, in terms of finishes, um. But the distribution we understand has to be, um, you know, fairly equal throughout. Or distributed throughout. So we've also, um. Updated the unit matrix to indicate that. Um, the caveat, I guess, to this is that we should mention, of, of course, the, um, subsidizing agency will do their final review of. Location of all units and, you know, if there's any minor changes needed, um. You know, that's a possibility, but we more or less wanted to give the board the assurance that these would be distributed. Uh, equally throughout and not concentrated into any one area of the building. So that happens on each floor plan. I'll just flip through them quickly so that I can get to. Uh, the two dimensional elevations here, these really just illustrate in two dimensional form what you saw on the three D perspectives. So for the duplex townhouses here. We're showing how the different areas of siding and color would break up. Uh, the building masses and help to articulate, um. The, the two separate residents that happen there. And likewise for the. Um, so you get a, another view of that here on the Dorothy Road elevation. And then for the, um, independent living building, um, you can see. Kind of in a more global exterior elevation scale here, how those different areas of siding helped to. Again, break up the, the, um, various facades. And can, and particularly connecting with the roof, uh, the peaked elements that we already had, um, up near the parapet. And. Just going through those quickly. I think that really is everything that I wanted to mention. Um, the last two set, uh, sheets here really didn't change. They're the site section sheets that, uh, more or less describe the geometry of the site. So that really concludes my presentation. And again, I'd be, um, happy to answer any questions, um. If and when, um, the board has them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and Mr. Chairman, I, I think that that probably kind of concludes our formal presentation. I mean, obviously there were. A lot more materials and responsive documents, and we're happy to, uh, get into any questions that you may have and pull up if there's, uh, specific plan that you need, but, um. We think, and as I, uh, indicated previously, the, uh. The project now, um, you know, as, as we. Introduced the revised concept in May, we, we do recognize that pieces have been, you know, we've been responding. Um, you know, a little bit piecemeal, you know, to whatever the board had asked. Um, and I think that. Um, kind of with your assistance, actually, and, and setting those deadlines for full submissions, what we presented this evening, um. And, and what we submitted previously and are presenting this evening. Um, com- does a complete package, if you will, um, and we. We, uh, we look forward to, you know. Providing any concluding comments that you may have, but, um. Uh, I, I think the, the project is, is very well defined, well thought out and, um, and. Thanks, um, not just to the, the team, obviously, but, but to the board for its feedback, to Beta for its feedback and. Um, the public and, and the professional town staff, um, it's been very helpful to, uh, roll up our. Sleeves and, and to get this out there. So with that said, um, please, should you have any questions, um, we're here to respond.
Thank you very much, um. If there's anyone to the board who wants to ask a question at this point, we can, otherwise I was going to go ahead and ask, uh, Beta to go ahead and. Um, discuss what they had provided. Mr. Mills.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if we can go back to that last slide of the site that showed the turnaround and everything. My one question is, and I was a little confused, I was trying to read through it today. How exactly would a fire truck get between the turnaround? And the right side of the building, they had that frontage. It looks like there's trees in there. You know, they say the, the road cert, you know, goes all the way around, but in fact it doesn't. It seems like there's a gap there. Could somebody illuminate, uh, what the fire department's response was?
Um, I first I'll ask, uh, Mr. Mills, maybe it would be helpful if John pulled up one of his turning exhibits.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give you the, stop my share.
One moment, please. John wasn't expecting me to ask him to pull that point out.
No, at this point I'm ready for that. Bear with me here while I. Share screen. All right, can everybody see that exhibit?
Yes.
Awesome. So, um, what we used here was the Arlington ladder truck and the dimensions of it is down here at the bottom of the figure. And we looked at the turning movements for a fire truck entering from Little John and, and Dorothy. Being able to travel the main driveway. We have a mountable curb right here on the, on the driveway. Going towards the parking garage under the senior living. And we have, uh, an appropriate width. Emergency vehicle access route. All the way around the south side of the building. It's able to make this corner. So these lines that are here, that's the, that's the limit of the, you know, the truck. Um, you know, wheel. Movement. It makes this corner, is able to navigate. Up here and back out to Dorothy Road. It is able to make either a right-hand turn onto Dorothy or, or a left-hand turn. And then we. We also looked at, um, so we know that the fire truck can make full circulation around the entire site. But then the, a question was asked about, could it come up the main drive aisle? Um, and we looked at a fire truck coming up and it. It, it does not make a turnaround in the, in the cul-de-sac area, but it is able to back out like a three-point turn. Back down the driveway and head out, which, um, the feedback that we got from the fire department was that. Any truck turning would have to be in accordance with, you know, the state, um, fire code. And you can do a, um, a hammerhead, you know, or a three-point turn for something like this, if it's a hundred and fifty feet. In length or less. And I, I believe that was actually in, uh, Beta's traffic peer review is one of their. Comments or something that they acknowledge. And maybe it was actually in the civil, um, so. We've demonstrated that it can make the entire perimeter of the site and access up towards the, the main entrance of the senior living building. Does that clarify?
Thank you, sir. Um, I appreciate all that. I'm wondering about the gap between the turnaround circle. Into the right of it, the turnaround circle. It looks like it's all landscaped in there and it's not pavement or whatever.
So. Yes, if. Circle to the right of it.
Yes, now the front of the building behind the first three duplexes. No, the next three, please.
Of these three.
Yeah. So right behind there, how would a fire truck get in there if it had to get to the front of those buildings with a ladder truck?
Um, there's no fire department access, but again, the fire department's comments was that it. Be designed to provide circulation and access in accordance with the state fire code. And there's, this meets this distance where a truck cannot travel, um, meets the, it does not exceed the distance. You know, if the truck is here, um, it does not have to have, uh, truck access across the entire front of the building.
So the fire chief is happy with that.
The, the fire chief, to, to be perfectly honest, has somewhat deferred, you know, final review comments. Until building permit application. But one of the, the mitigating factors for not having that, um. Full access across the front of the building is that this building will be fully sprinkled and alarmed. Which changes the fire department under the state fire code, what the requirements are for, you know. Physical access to each side of the building.
Okay, thank you, sir. You've answered my question.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Yeah, um, I'll go ahead and, um. Ask Marty Nova if. Review that there's any outstanding comments, um, from Beta Group, who's the, the board's peer review consultants.
Yes, so, so we have, um, both Bill McGrath and Tyler DeRuder and. Dennis Flynn here. I think we'll start with civil, um, since we're on the subject somewhat, um, and that, that would be Bill.
Sure. Thanks, Marty. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Again, Bill McGrath with Beta Group, um. I think John Heschin did a good job of, of summarizing, you know, where we're at in our review, but. Let's just, uh, clarify a couple of points. You know, I think the latest submission of the design and the analysis for the stormwater. I think we're satisfied that that demonstrates that, that the project is managing all of their surface runoff on site. One change from a, a comment we had in our previous letter that, um, the analysis had been showing some increase. Uh, even though it was relatively small going towards Dorothy Road. Um, in this latest submission, uh, the site's been regraded to, uh. Make sure that, that there's no increase in runoff towards Dorothy Road. And again, everything is managed on site. Um, so I think at, at this point. We're satisfied with that. The two outstanding items, um, and Mr. Heschin mentioned it as well as. His final determination, um, of the seasonal hog groundwater table. You know, the, the site development has been, been raised up since the, some of the previous iterations. Uh, but I still think there's some question about where that seasonal high groundwater table is. I think one of the questions is the timing of when that, those test pits are done and. And that information is provided, you know, whether, whether. and that information is provided, you know, whether whether it should wait until closer to construction or whether, you know, that information should be be gathered now. It may be valuable to the board if if it does indicate there's any design changes needed. So you know, I I I think certainly given the the rain we've had and, you know, I'll defer somewhat to conservation as well, but you know, we may be able to get that information sooner rather than later. And I think the other piece is the construction management plan. I think that's going to be a valuable piece of information going forward, both for the board, the town and the neighborhood. I suggest that maybe, and I know all the information isn't available at this point, but maybe if if the applicant could provide a draft of of a construction management plan to the board before you make a decision, at least outlining what the the CMP will will contain and maybe talking about some of the information that probably should be available in terms of phasing the project, construction access through the neighborhood, how the site might be managed in terms of where part construction workers might park their vehicles. You know, some of that information I I think is probably available at this point. And some of the other details probably have to wait until further along. But like I said, other than those those two issues and and just a couple of other minor cleanup things on the on the plans and the long term pollution prevention plan, I think at this point, we don't have any further comments.
Thank you. Were there comments on the on the transportation side?
Sure, thinking it's your chair. Tyler DeRuder from Beta, we provided some response to comments yesterday, responding to BAI's responses. As they mentioned earlier in the meeting, we've taken a look at things like trip generation, mode split and the traffic operations. The outstanding comments that really were looked into were the vehicle circulation patterns, so that the turning sketches. One of the things that we highlighted were the bus, the the jitney bus that was utilized has to cross over to the opposite side of the driveway to circulate around the cul-de-sac. And, you know, in looking at it, there was a comment noting that the property manager or the the property owner would lease or own that that vehicle. So we believe that they would be able to manage how that that vehicle operates and ensure that there's nothing blocking them from making that maneuver throughout the course of the day if they have to. One thing I would note in just looking at the slides today is there is one sketch that shows the center island of the cul-de-sac as green, which suggests that that might be grass and or raised. And then there was another rendering we saw that showed the island as gray. So one of the questions now would be, you know, is that going to be a flush island or a raised island? If it's flush and or mountable, should a vehicle otherwise be in the cul-de-sac, the bus or an emergency vehicle? You would expect to be able to drive over that island and potentially get around them. If it's raised, that may or may not be the same situation. So I would request that they kind of clarify what that island is going to look like. In terms of the fire truck that was sort of discussed in the front of the building and then in the in the rear, there was a comment in one of the documents that stated that the backside path around the rear of the building would be a six foot wide pavement path with 14 feet of of reinforced soil or or grass. So we would defer to the fire chief to make sure that they can get their truck over that type of a surface. Those were really the the outstanding couple of bits there. Be happy to answer anything else.
Thank you. Are there any questions this time from the board or I do want to ask the Conservation Commission to to join us for a minute. So Ms. Chapman, if you're available.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Chairman Klein. I do have a few comments or questions based on on the new material and some of it just may be my confusion. I'll start with the waivers. It looks like the updated waiver list is pretty similar to the previous waiver list. Though the comment letter on Beta's waiver list show that the applicant agreed with with many of Beta and the Conservation Commission's determinations that some of these waivers were not required or not necessary and we recommended they be rescinded to be requested, not to be requested because they were met by the change in the plan. So I guess I don't understand why the same waiver list is is being proposed. Maybe somebody could explain that to me.
Ms. Kiefer, if you don't mind?
Sure, no problem. Thank you. So the the waiver list, Beta had responded to certain of the waiver requests and then the Conservation Commission led by Spalding. And then Ms. Chapman is correct that I submitted a the applicant's response to that. And there were a couple on there that I I think that it it was a little bit unclear whether there there was a statement perhaps within, I can't remember if it was the commissions or if it was the Beta saying, we recommend that it be denied, it meets the standards. And and I wasn't certain if that was a typo, meaning we recommend that it be withdrawn, that it's not, you know, that it meets the standards, therefore not necessary. And so within our written response that we provided on the second, we attempted to address that and and just point out where we may need clarification. So if I can kind of do a quick little walkthrough on some of those. So relative to the we had asked for waivers of of certain jurisdictional or or definitional, because sometimes a board may do it one way or the other. You can, so we had asked, for instance, for the aura to count as a resource area. So rather than ask for a waiver under the aura provisions, we just asked that it be as a resource area. So we we crafted our waiver list both ways. And it seems both from Beta and from the commission that they would probably prefer to do it the second way, so not waive the definitions. And and I think that that's fine. It's Ms. Chapman's point. The like the definitional definitionals under, I think, it's section two or section four of the bylaws, but those could go by the wayside. And then with respect to sections 23, 24 and 25 of the local bylaw, that that's when I indicated previously that I wasn't entirely clear what was being what the suggestion of the comment was. Was it that it met it and therefore the waiver was unnecessary? In which case, I think the the board can make a determination, be like, you don't need this, it's not necessary, you need it. And, you know, to take us back a bit in time, a a long period of time, actually, Paul Haverty had said at one point in response or an explanation of the waiver list that sometimes the board looks at two types of waivers, more process waivers and more kind of substantive waivers of local bylaw. And, you know, obviously, the comprehensive permit is a master permit. So you don't really need the process waiver and and I had agreed with him on that, but sometimes as a belt and suspenders, we include those kind of process waivers, if you will, just to make certain that the board understands that it is issuing, everything is a master permit and, you know, there's it's very clear that there's no condition that says, and now you have to go back to Conservation Commission and get a local order of conditions for for work within the aura or what have you. And so moving on to, as I suggested, 23, 24 and 25. So Beta's comment for section 23, which is land subject to flooding, it's Beta didn't recommend granting a waiver because it says the current design meets the intent of the resource area presumption significance and compliance with the regulation can be met. And and so for that one, I I think that we agree that we have met it. And as you if you look at our waiver list, we've said, you know, the explanation is we ask for to waive limited work in floodplains to be shown on project plans, floodplain compensatory storage shown at ratio of two to one. And and so it it's more of a process waiver. So if if we're all in agreement that we don't need to see process waivers, we can withdraw that. Under section 24, that was vegetation removal and replacement performance standards. And here it says that Beta does not recommend granting a waiver. But then it but then it goes on, Beta's peer review went on to say that the project provides habitat restoration at two to one floodplain compensation and also provides habitat restoration with the rare acreage that will remain and develop, such restoration efforts should follow the guidance provided in section 24. It's a little ambiguous to to the applicant what that means exactly. And so I I think that we're put in a in a in an odd position. Do we continue to request the waiver? Because I'm not quite certain what that means, what the guidance of section 24 really means. And in our response that we submitted on the second, we somewhat point that out. And also looking at the commission's letter on that same section, section 24, the commission confirmed in its letter that the project as proposed, including two to one compensatory flood storage, vegetation mitigation and habitat restoration is in compliance with these regulations. And so again, on one comment is saying, you know, we don't recommend granting the waiver. And then the other comment saying it's in compliance. So if it's if the statement is that the waiver is not necessary, then we'll accept that and it can be withdrawn. But if they're saying deny the waiver and then make the project adhere to some performance standards that we're not clear on, we would like to know that at the at the get go. And then lastly, I think, was under section 25, and that's the aura. And Beta's comment letter noted that the the various work and and mitigation and design of the project will provide a benefit to the board's ability to protect the presumed resource, presumed interest it protects, it provides. But then it went on to say that it's unclear whether they meant to deny it or meant that it wasn't required, once again, as we point out in our letter of September 2. So maybe before I explain further, perhaps we could get some input from Beta as to what their recommendation was, specifically, I think, towards sections 24 and 25 of the requested waivers of the wetlands by law.
I I'd be happy to hear Beta's input. I also still have some comments too, but Marty?
Sure. Yeah, sure, sure. So on section 24, the vegetation removal and replacement performance standards, our position is that we're not recommending that the waiver be granted because of the significant restoration component of this project, one being the floodplain mitigation area as well as the the 12 acres outside the project limits that will be basically restored. The bylaw provides very specific requirements for vegetation removal and replacement. And we feel it's important that that particular bylaw performance standard remain in place to make sure that going forward, the work is conducted to meet those those requirements. The upland adjacent upland resource area waiver entirely, again, our position was that it the waiver shouldn't be granted because it because the project currently meets the intent of of that resource and performance standards. But what that waiver does is basically it 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 eliminates the the presumed significance of the aura. And, you know, this project will be before the Conservation Commission at some point and may have gone through some changes at that point. And it just it just provides the commission some some flexibility with with that particular resource area in case there's further encroachment into it. You know, again, it's up to, obviously, the Conservation Commission's input's very important on this on this matter. But we wanted to be consistent with the 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 other 40B in town and and follow our our recommendations as we presented them in that case. So you know, the the applicant didn't provide any real hardships for these particular sections of the of the regulations and bylaw to remain in place. So therefore, you know, we feel that waivers are not needed.
Mr. Chairman, if I could quickly respond to a couple of points there. The I I I believe that Marty had said that she was worried about waiving the presumption of significance as the aura. That's not really a performance standard, that's a presumption. And and kind of the other point of that, though, and maybe I didn't fully explain it before, but when this project does go before the Conservation Commission, it's going to be solely under the Wetlands Protection Act and it's not going to be under the local wetlands bylaw and the aura is not applicable. It will be work in the buffer zone potentially, but it's not work in the aura. And and then in terms of just the keeping consistency with projects, as I noted in my comment letter on the second, under section 24, the commission actually had recommended withdrawal of the waiver request for 24 because I believe it said that it it says that the project was in compliance and recommended withdrawal under section 24. So if if we're talking consistency, there's a little bit of inconsistency there. And and so I think that perhaps on both of those fronts, the applicant needs to retain its waiver request for the board's consideration. Yeah, you know, under section 24, we've proposed, and again, just the board understands when we request a waiver, we're requesting the waiver for the work shown on the plan. So it's not to say that we're going to do things willy nilly. It's 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 tied into the project plans that we're asking the board to approve. And so we would keep both of those waiver requests, both sections 24 and and for sections 25. And and again, just a reminder that when this project comes before the Conservation Commission, it's under the WPA and not the local bylaw.
Chairman Klein, may I respond?
Ms. Chapman, please.
Thank you. Thank you. For for the other 40B, just for clarification, the Conservation Commission did recommend that the applicant withdraw their request for waivers for 24 and 25 in that instance. And the reasoning was we had much more detailed planting plans, much more detail on moving a stormwater feature than we have with this project. The other reason for that is that we also proposed a special condition. I understand that the conditions are still draft, but there was a special condition that it requires the applicant. that it requires the applicant, when they present the project as a notice of intent under the Wetlands Protection Act to the conservation commission, that they address all the vegetation replacement issues that are in section twenty-four E. So it has that as a special condition that upon coming to the conservation commission, the applicant will provide that detailed information for review. Under the Wetlands Protection Act, as you said, there's the buffer zone. It's not a resource area, but it is a protected area. There are also other issues in the act that need to protect, be protected wildlife habitat, which has to do with trees, removal, et cetera, as you understand. So so there are other other tools that we have, let's say, for reviewing this information.
Okay.
And and I have some specific questions about certain plans, but I don't know if you want to get off the waiver topic yet. So I guess what I heard is that the applicant is willing to withdraw the waiver for the aura definition. That was the 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 first one that was discussed by Ms. Kiefer and for the land subject to flooding. But they are not willing to to withdraw the waivers for section twenty-four or section twenty-five. And the conservation commission agrees with Beta that these waivers should be denied.
Thank you. If we could move off of the waivers, that'd be good.
Okay. May I may I make two comments on some of the updated plans?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Updated plans included bio retention area and rain garden as well as an adjacent woodland restoration area, which talked about tree removal and vegetation replacement, et cetera. The conservation commission doesn't have enough information in the packet to really tell if this stormwater feature, the bio retention rain garden, would be viable. We don't have the detail on on the composition of the amended soil. The wetland seed mix may work on the bottom where it's wet, but wouldn't necessarily work on the slopes or upland. The woodland restoration, though, we appreciate that it discusses approval by a landscape architect and a wildlife ecologist. We we think there should be a additional review or requirement such as a special condition that the board approve any vegetation removal and planting plans in these areas as well as invasive management plans for these areas. Those are consistent with special conditions that we have drafted for the other forty B. Thank you.
Good. Are there questions from the board in regards to the many things we've seen? Mr. Revellak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few questions. One is regarding the bicycle shed. So I will be shed be covered. That's first. And will be, I mean, the bicycle parking area in general be secured? So like a locked gate or that sort of thing?
Ms. Kiefer, do you have it?
I I will answer it anyway. Perhaps Scott, if you want to clarify anything, but yes, it will be covered. And yes, it will be secure. If you if you want any further details, probably Scott is your person to respond to that, but those are those are easy questions. Yeah.
Well, you know, for like my, you know, my point of asking it was to make sure it was suitable for storing bicycles outside during inclement weather, and it sounds like it will be.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Now, the overview letter mentions that this the independent living facility will be for residents of age sixty-two plus. So that will be the minimum age of residents living there?
Yes.
Okay, and. Let's see, with respect to the, you know, traffic, we are, you know, it seems it sounds like that we agree or there is agreement that this configuration will generate fewer trips relative to the relative to the hundred seventy-six unit apartment in the earlier iteration. So does it for peak traffic, it really breaks down to about one vehicle, one additional vehicle every two to three minutes? Is is that a is that about right?
Yeah, that's about correct.
Okay, great. And a final question with respect to the waiver request for title five, article eight, section eleven. This is the bonding for work in flood-prone areas, I think. I was wondering if the conservation commission had any thoughts or could provide an estimate of what such a bond would be and how they feel about whether whether that waiver should be granted.
Ms. Chaptik? If you're available to answer that. She may have stepped away.
Well, if she's not long, no longer available, it's, you know, as long, it would be nice to have an have, I believe it would be nice to have an answer at some point, but it doesn't necessarily need to be this very moment. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Chairman?
Please.
Ms. Kiefer. Well, the minimum age is sixty-two, I gather. I'm trying to get a there there have been various estimates or that as to how old, on average, the residents are apt to be. And I I understand that that is just a protection and and nobody knows for sure who it is you're going to attract to the complex. But at one point, I think your expert testified on the twenty-ninth, said it would be people in their sixties and seventies who were pretty good health. I think at some point in one of your papers, Ms. Kiefer, you said mid-seventies to nineties. And as somebody who has a certain amount of experience with some of that range, I can tell you that it sounds like only a few years, but it makes a pretty big difference in your style of life. And I'm wondering if when you focusing on that, you you have any better estimate of just just how old do you expect these people to be?
I I believe that I may pull in either Bob Angler or Glenn and Art. But I I think that the kind of that range of what we were just had I said before, like really more of a mid-seventies to nineties potentially. You know, with with age restricted housing usually have two kind of categories, but fifty-five plus or sixty-two plus. So this would be like, so the sixty-two plus is our option, you know, because there's obviously, it's not going to be a fifty-five plus. It's not going to try. It's not designed for people that are fifty-five plus. And, you know, sixty-two plus, maybe there's some people that are sixty-two, but you know, what we're being told by our experts that that design these is it's it's really an older population than that. And I don't, Art and Gwen, if you want to add anything to that response, unmute yourself and.
Be fine.
As sure if you're speaking, you're muted.
I I think they're looking for the unmute button.
Amy, can you hear me? We have been going from what a possible operator has said that his sense of the market is. And of course, things fluctuate with with markets, as we know, and there and the addition of of a new facility will change the way an existing facility might might find their the the people coming to 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 each one would happen. Anyway, what we were told earlier was that it was likely that this facility in this location with with the cluster of other facilities in the area, it was likely that it would be people in their in their seventies and eighties, even more in their eighties, that would that would be attracted to this community. And that's that was just not a scientific statement, but one of a marketing evaluation. And I appreciate whatever Bob Angler might add to this because he's in this in this business all the time.
Mr. Angler?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
I'm not an expert. I mean, I am the president of a nonprofit that, you know, owns and operates a facility like this, but that's just one example. I think the mid-eighties is what we're looking at, more or less. And bear in mind, the range is still there. You could try and pick an average, but you'll have people at the lower range and from seventy to the upper range of ninety, but it might be fall somewhere in the mid-eighties, given given what how people are living these days. So that's as close as I can come to an estimate. And I think that's, you know, that's what you plan for.
Thank you.
It depends on, excuse me, it depends also on the people's health, as we all know. So a very healthy eighty-nine-year-old is is better off there than somebody who's pretty frail at seventy. So again, that's why the health is a component just as much as the age, more so perhaps, because the age really doesn't matter. But it's the it's the health and how they can live in the environment. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Mr. Roach.
Yes, Mr. Hanlon.
If, in fact, we're dealing with a population that's largely in their seventies and even possibly more in their eighties, then I take it, it's true, isn't it, that the ITE classification senior housing attached is looking at fifty-five plus? Is that right?
Yeah, I believe that's how I I T E defines it. And so so the analysis that we've provided, in our opinion, is is conservative in that sense. Because the 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 other land use code is a is a congregate care facility, which would match more of the older people with more services and whatnot. That that has a lower trip generation rate than than the senior housing attached does.
So if I, I mean, it's it's going to be conservative, forgetting for the moment the health of the older people that lots of people from fifty-five to sixty-five, say, are still in the labor force and are more likely to be commuting, which is what the which is which is what the peak generation is likely to be about. And if you're dealing with people in their later seventies or their eighties, you do, like me, you still work, but you've given up on getting paid for it. And so I'm guessing that it's a pretty substantial conservatives conservative bias there. But I take it your view is still that even when people are doing some commuting, at least some of them are not going to do it by automobile, and that justifies at least the minimum haircut you've given for boat split, which I noticed that you've really cut back on compared to the what is being done for the for the duplex units. Is is that a fair statement of your approach?
Yeah, I would say that summarizes it quite well.
And if you look, we we are only looking at things that are new, but I was impressed, actually, in looking at the when you take the trip generation and put fold it back into the predictions of the growth of traffic and what's already there. That not only is this not that different from the one seventy-six, but that it has, with the exception possibly of the intersection at Little John and and Lake Street, it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference one way or the other. So dealing with these trip generation assumptions is not the sort of thing that moves the needle very much in quantifying the amount of impact the development may have on the on the traffic. Is is that a fair statement of your exhibit?
Well, I I would say what what we're what we're seeing is is that the amount of traffic that either one of these specific facilities that we've looked at over the traffic that's there in the no build condition i- is is insignificant. If you put a a massive, you know, warehouse or retail facility there or something like that, then then you might, you know, the the numbers would be different. But in in comparison of of these two facilities, the chip generation isn't isn't that significantly different? And therefore, the effect of the 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 trips on the surrounding area are are very similar.
Thanks. I have two other questions, but there one of them, I think, is appropriately addressed to Ms. Chaptik, if she's still, if she's back. But if not, my maybe to Ms. Kiefer, we've had a discussion about waivers. And a lot of that is the sort of thing that only lawyers can be interested in. But as I sort of look at where things are, and leaving aside the question as to whether or not pro plans are detailed enough and whether we need to be seeing what kind of further review might be appropriate down the road. Essentially, everything that the proposal we have before us is in every respect, essential respect, I think, in compliance with our local bylaw. And if that's not true, I'd like it to be highlighted exactly where there's a noncompliance, because most of the discussions about waivers are is focusing on whether or not you need a waiver when you're complying. And it seems to me the big story there is that we've come a long way from a year and a half ago in terms of really enforcing the town's wetlands bylaw. And I just wonder if either of you would disagree with that.
Mr. Chaptik? I can't hear you now. Oh, sorry, no.
Now?
Now we can't get.
Yes.
Sorry. I I agree with you, Mr. Hanlon. That's why I was proposing, at least on section twenty-five, which is the aura. I think that the applicant, based on the revised plans, meets the intent of the aura. And if this project came up to the conservation commission, it it would, we do allow some some intrusion on the outer twenty-five feet of the aura with mitigation such as mitigation plantings and things like that. And I think that this project meets that. In terms of section twenty-four, the vegetation, the problem is that there's not enough information to see if it meets the bylaw or not. And so I see two ways dealing with this. One is we put in a special condition that says that the applicant must provide X, Y, and Z, and that's what we did for the other forty B. And it needs to be approved by the CBA, you know. But the the other the other way is is to ask for that information now. And the other way is is what the applicant has done, which is ask for a waiver of those bylaw provisions, which the conservation commission and Beta recommend not approving for the reasons that Marty gave earlier.
Thanks. Stephanie, do you did you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. So with with respect to, I guess I'll go in in the order of the last one first, the vegetation removal and replacement. If I heard Ms. Chaptik correctly, she was suggesting deny it and then impose some conditions. And there had been a, gosh, so many moons ago, there had been a hearing, though, and I think Paul had given the board kind of a good little. gosh, so many moons ago, there had been a hearing though, and I think Paul had given the board kind of a a good little primer on waivers and and Paul, cut me off if I'm misstating what you said, but it was basically the board can consider a waiver request. And sometimes they decide to grant a waiver. And it it may be, you know, subject to, you know, there there's a condition that, you know, well, okay, so it's not like it's it's going crazy or or, you know, and um, so denying it and then imposing conditions is I I'm not quite certain, like what that serves you, because then you've denied um, what has been requested. And so I I again, I I think that the the waiver request is appropriate, that it's subject to the the plans and and the landscaping plan. And then if the board feels that there's a need for additional conditioning, you know, we're happy to discuss that. One thing I would just caution the board and Paul probably has, because he's an excellent attorney, is just that the board doesn't want to impose any what's known as condition subsequent. So that requires the applicant to after they get the permit to to do that. So so I'm not going to do Paul's work for him.
Yeah, Paul does a great job. I just wanted to, I wanted to step back to the essence of it, Matt, because, I mean, we're talking here about what the nature of a condition might be, what additional details might be necessary in order to show that the applicant is carrying through in the appropriate way to the kinds of commitments that it's already made. And I understand those are important issues, but to me, it's more important that we're you're just, we're mostly dealing with means here and that at the end of the day, there's not a huge disagreement that people that that the will figure out, Mr. Haverty will figure out, and we'll all applaud him for doing that. But at the end of the day, we've we've reduced that distance down to a matter of more legal technicalities than than substance. I had one final question, Mr. Mr. Chairman, and that I guess, I think it's to Mr. Derhesin, maybe Ms. Kiefer. And I have to apologize for being a kind of a pest about this, but over the course of many hearings, we have touched on the question why it is exactly this development can be expected with reasonable assurance not to exacerbate the flooding that is experienced in the neighborhood. And I know we've also talked about the flooding on the property in particular, but here I want to focus on on the neighborhood. And I was wondering if if it would be possible for you for our next hearing to just gather together a summary of that argument, the sort of thing, Ms. Kiefer, if if you were dealing with the judge, you asked for proposed findings of fact that you will put in that just brings it all together. So I don't mean additional research or anything like that. I mean, really essentially marshaling what's been said already and bringing it together. So if we can look at it and say, well, this is the case. And if you could do that, and Mr. McGrath could review it and say he's persuaded, or if not, tell us why. That would make it really help. That would be really be helpful when we get into this to conditions at the next hearing and, you know, sort of understanding clearly why it all is. It seems to me that it relates partly to the stormwater, which Mr. McGrath has already addressed. It also it might relate to why it is there's flooding now that may have to do with inadequate drainage through the systems the town already has. And obviously, there have been questions raised about groundwater and the possibility that some sort of of groundwater seeping is is causing the problem. But whatever it is, I think that the neighbors and the and the commission and the board needs to be clear on exactly what the arguments are and and be able to if may pass a judgment as to whether we think that that there's a risk, and if so, whether what how big a risk that is. So again, I I'm not looking for you know, thousands of dollars of new research, but just sort of marshaling it all together so that we can see it without going through twenty hearings and and have it in writing, so we can look at it and say, well, this is what it is, and we don't have to again, look at all of the great material that A C M I gives us. And I appreciate it if that if you would find that's reasonable and could bring that together. It's sort of it's a mini version of restating something, I guess.
I I think and and John may be upset at me for for saying this, but if just to give you a a a quick feedback on that, John, if you're prepared just to hit the the highlights to give Mr. Hammond a quick response on on the elements there. And I know that he 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 put forth some of them in his question itself, so.
Yeah, I I I sort of, you know, I do know where I really am kind of very eager to have something in writing, because you can't, I mean, this is just a moment going back and recovering this moment means looking at the A C M I tape and finding exactly where it took place and so on. It's 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 hard to deal with what's said in the oral hearing, and it would be a lot easier if this were more like a post trial brief and you we were able to look at it and have it summarized. And then if we need to go back and look at the specific hearing, it it would be better, because I know I've asked this question to Mr. Hessian before. Maybe a bunch of times, and it would take me a long, long time to go back and find all the places where he's addressed it.
So do we not want a a high level? Or do we want to save it for a written?
I would, I probably the board should say what it wants. I personally would like to have a written thing and not spend I mean, time tonight is pretty valuable, and I'd like to move on if we if we can, but if others would like to have the overview, that that would be fine with me anyway.
I agree with Mr. Hamlin. Yes, we'll go ahead. We'll we'll request that in writing and we'll we'll move on. Anything further, Mr. Hamlin?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? I have a few. Most of them are have already been addressed in some fashion. So one was the question about the rain garden to the bioswell feature which Ms. Chapnik had mentioned earlier. It would be helpful if we could get a little more definition as to to exactly what that is, so we can have some assurance as to its its functionality. I'm especially concerned because it is immediately adjacent to in a budding neighbor. And so I just want to make sure that whatever's being proposed for that is going to that we have some insurance that it's going to function in the manner that we're we're anticipating and will not be causing an impact on the adjacent neighbor. On the question of bike parking. So that the shelter and the the racks, I think you're very good for bicycles. I see people as they age, a lot of people transition from bicycles to trikes to tricycles, which have a more larger footprint. And the question I had had is probably a question for Mr. Mr. Vlasic. On the basement plan, the the garage floor plan at the extreme right, there is a labeled out common area, and I was curious what that space is allocated for.
Sure. So I I think it's not really well defined yet. That common area on the garage level is kind of also related to other common areas that exist on the first on the ground floor plan and the second floor plan. So it's not well defined. I think that so it would be reasonable to say that it wouldn't be out of the question that some of that area could be potentially used for that. There also that reserve parking area that's in the garage at the lower left corner. That is more or less an open, you know, striped area that could also be used for that purpose. And there's other striped areas around the garage. We kind of wanted to designate one area just to have, you know, a spot for it. But as you look around the garage plan, there are other striped areas that aren't quite big enough for parking spaces that could certainly be used for what you're suggesting, a larger footprint for a a dry cycle.
Okay. Yeah, that the common area has stood out to me because it appears that there is a ramp up to grade. And so that would be
Yes.
For that purpose. Okay.
Yep, agreed.
There was a note in the comments from the Department of Planning and Community Development that Lake Street is currently signed for no heavy trucking. And so I was curious thinking forward, not necessarily to the construction phase, but to the operations phase. Is there any concern on behalf of the the management team that they would be able to operate this facility without the need for heavy trucks?
I I'll let Art respond, but I believe the response is there's no concern that we would need heavy trucks and we we had talked about before in terms of deliveries and whatnot to the facility. We could, you know, we can really define that through management, you know, through timing and and even through sizing probably of of the truck. So Art, if I've misstated, please jump in and correct me.
No, I agree with that. We we, as Gwen mentioned, we've talked to potential one in particular that might might be interested in managing this project. And they, he feels quite confident that not only can you control the size of trucks, but you can even control the time they deliver things, in other words, keep it off hours ten between ten and three, something like that. So I think he's fairly confident.
But but the size of the of the vehicles that would be delivering food or bread or whatever can be smaller van type size, not large trucks.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. There was a comment in from the again, from the Department of Planning and Community Development regarding the finished coloration on the townhouse units, because the all six units have the the same three proposed colors. And they were looking for a little more variation in color similar to so the remainder of the neighborhood has a lot of variation in color. And I was curious if it if the applicant could consider so currently, there's like a yellow accent color that occurs throughout. Would it be possible to maintain the the gray and the red in all those buildings, but then that yellow color may vary from building to building, so that some might be, you know, yellow, but some might be a different shade or a different color, just to provide a little bit of variation?
I I I think we'd be happy with that, yeah.
Okay.
That the 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 color consideration will go through a a lot more thought. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. The I understand that there were three test pits that were installed last year. Has there been any continued monitoring of those test pits, or were they just sort of a one time check?
There were one time test pit. There were no monitoring wells installed when those were completed in November.
Okay. There was a question that was raised by our our traffic consultant regarding the circle in the middle of the turnaround in front of the building and whether that was something that was going to be raised or whether it was going to be something that could be driven over. And I was curious if you had an opinion on that.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I just spoke up the last question you asked, John Hessian. That will be a flush surface, likely a paver or cobblestone type of treatment to just to differentiate the interior part of the circle, but it cannot be raised or planted. There was a little artistic license taken in the colored site plan that was not accurate.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then the last question, so I know there's a waiver in regards to Arlington's inclusionary zoning by law, which currently requires that any residential development with six or more units to provide fifteen percent of their units and seventy percent A M I. And because this project is being proposed under forty B, it is the subsidizing agency has an agreement that it will be twenty five percent of units at eighty percent A M I. And I there was a couple of questions sort of back and forth about what the implication is of Arlington's inclusionary zoning by law being in effect while this project goes forward under forty B. And so I had spoken to a couple of different people. It was recommended that possibly I asked Mr. Engler this question because he has a little more experience in regards to how some of these projects are funded, especially through the state agencies, as to how that would be possibly handled by a subsidizing agency. I don't know if Mr. Engler is available to us.
How are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh. If if the request it's a different issue, the request by this by the town is that different ratios than what the the state requires. And it's up to the applicant to say whether they can afford that or not. We would say we cannot. Makes the project more uneconomic to go take ten percent off the rents of fifteen percent of the units. And that takes a lot of work to show that and have some consultant review it, et cetera. But that's our position that the state agency requires what they do, and we meet that, and they don't they don't ask for anything more than that. So the town can ask for it. If some applicants could provide it, great. We're not in a position having reduced what we've done to be able to do that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Chairman, can I speak to that?
Mr. Haverty, please.
Well, Bob, it's my understanding that mass housing generally requires eligibility to be at eighty percent area median income. But then for the units to be priced based upon seventy percent area median income, am I not correct about that?
They used to, Paul, they used to be able to set them at seventy. Some years ago, they allowed applicants to go right to eighty percent because of the you know, that cost. I mean, they still show that in their little formula for selling units, but I have not seen that in rental housing. All the developments that I've done are at eighty percent, and the and the state agencies have all accepted that. So there's no requirement to go to seven.
Okay, so then at minimum, there's going to need to be a modification to the waiver request to include that waiver.
It's in there.
It's in there, okay.
Hey. Thank you both on that. Those were the outstanding questions I had. One last call to the board for questions and comments. Around everyone looks satisfied. Okay, so it is nine twenty two. So in a moment, I'm going to open up the public comment period on the revised design for the proposed project. Public questions and comments will only be taken if they relate to the matter at hand. It should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing our decision. The board strongly encourages the introduction of new information, as there's a strong record of comment on topics discussed at prior hearings. To provide an orderly, floated meeting and to allow the inclusion of many voices, the chair asked that individual public speakers, please limit their comments to less than five minutes. Additional time may be provided at the discretion of the chair to provide time for questions to be addressed. The procedure for, excuse me, requesting to speak will be the same as for previous hearings. Please select the raise hand button from the comments tab on Zoom or dial star nine on your phone to indicate you would like to speak. When called upon, please identify yourself by name and address for the record. You'll be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Once all public questions and comments have been addressed, or the time allocated by the chair has ended, the public comment period will be closed for this session of the hearing. I would like to conclude this evening's hearing sort of in the ten thirty, ten forty five range. So I'd like to close the public comment period no later than an hour from now, which is nine would be ten twenty three P M. And the board and staff will do our best to show sections of drawings or any other documents that you would like to have discussed. So with that, let me quickly start a speaker list. So, Ms. Brown.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Question for you, since I am actually in process of putting my eighty five and ninety one year old parents into assisted living. This is a topic that's close to my current experience level. And what I'm not And what I'm not understanding and what I've probably missed in some of the documents is I don't understand what their care and management model is. Are they doing meals? Is there going to be an onsite manager? Is there going to be somebody who is. Directing care in the building or is this just apartment living and everybody's on their own? I'm not, because I, I heard somebody earlier talking about food truck deliveries and things like that. So are there meals being served? Is there some kind of organized care? Is there a, a director on site?
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Can you address that question? You're unmuted, sorry.
I apologize for that. So the, the development is not assisted living. It is going to be independent living with services. And I, I believe in one of our submission, we kind of outlined. Basically the, the type of services, but there will be an operator onsite and there will be. Assistance with scheduling, doctors' visits, whatnot. I think maybe Art, if I could pull you back on, I, I think you gave a, a good brief cursory. Just to re-hit the point of what will be provided. Or what is expected to be.
The, I think a critical thing is that there will be a unorganized dinner every night. And there'll be a waitstaff coming in the mid-afternoon. There'll be cooks coming in mid-afternoon. Uh, one of the issues that came up, they will not be coming to peak hours. And dinner will be served available to anybody who would like to, to join. They don't, they're not forced to join. It's not part of the program, but it's an option. So that's a major thing. There are two people there, uh, I think during the entire day. And they're, they're to help. They're there to support. They're there to, uh, make sure everything is running smoothly. And there are a lot of activities. I think one of those people probably would be involved in having organizing activities. Glenn, you may want to give you in a minute to add something to that. And then there's a jitney van. And I think one of the things that is, is really an amenity for people is that the, your van can take people to different. Places to enjoy different amenities in the community. Glenn, you want to add anything?
Well, yes, I'd like to say that first of all, we're, we are talking about what. An experienced operator was giving his best judgment as to how this would, would be organized. And he did include that there'd be an exercise room and as well as some kind of, of medical. Examination space so that, that somebody could get a certain amount of, of medical assistance or advice onsite. But again, we, we haven't got an operator up and running and, and we, we're, what we're. Trying to do is to provide the space for a program that works. So.
Yeah, you can see by the amount of common area space we have in the building. If you look at the plans, it's, it's much larger than a normal apartment building. Which would be exam, examination rooms would be, uh. Sort of office space for any kind of board meeting that somebody might be, be involved in or business positions or whatever.
He talked about a country kitchen that where you could have, you know, somebody who was, you know, being able to do a cooking class and that kind of stuff. So.
But there is some information like that as part of our presentation in detail.
Right. So just basically to recap, there's, it, it's not assisted living, but there are services and there's social outlets. There's, um, there's staff that's available. There's a jitney that's available. Um, and as Art pointed out, um, there, there's a, there's a, a large amount of community space that. Once the operator comes on, they kind of like more tailor it to what they need. So I hope that was responsive.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Just one last follow-up question. So I, I, I looked on the plans, but I didn't see a dining room space. Or common area space that I would think of as being able to serve. A hundred and fifty, two hundred people meals. Did I miss that in the plans?
Um, Ms. Kiefer.
Well, I could answer that. Scott can answer in a minute, but the reason we didn't detail laying out dining rooms and kitchens or. Any kind of rooms at all is that, that different operators will do it a different way. They'll all provide the same services, but one may want a kitchen here, one there, whatever. So we just blocked out the common space, which is shown in the drawing as, as a light green. But the, uh, the, the dining room that we would probably do, I don't know, Scott, you might want to say something. This would be on the southern side, would be right next to a large porch, which would look out over the, uh. Over the, uh.
Woodland.
Woodland. Scott, you want to add anything?
Classic. Yeah, sure. Yeah, I think, thanks, Art. I think you summarized it pretty well, but I thought it might just be helpful to quickly. Um, I just shared my screen so that we can just, you know, indicate where exactly it is that you're talking about. So on the ground floor plan, which is here. The, the green shaded area that Art is referring to is right in the center of the building here. There's also additional. Uh, common area that you see on the second floor plan. So really those are the spaces that would be defined and specifically what Art was just referring to. Is with respect to the dining room. A preferred location, depending on what the operator ultimately decides, might be this area here, which is on the south side. This porch area that's being contemplated. You know, might be a nice complement to a dining room where you'd actually be able to go outside afterwards. So.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Ms. Brown?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next is a phone-in caller with the number ending in six four four. You go ahead and unmute yourself. Yes, please.
Yes, five, six, four, four.
Yes, indeed.
Yes. Uh, yeah, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Um, my question is this, that it, it generally the two main issues currently between. Uh, the neighborhood and the, and the development, I think the neighborhood's concerns are traffic. And flooding. And perhaps density on the site. Um, and I know that there was a brief mention during one of the presentations about. The deciding when to do, when to measure the, uh, the flow, the groundwater flow from runoff and such. And, and how, you know, should we do it during a high water time or. Regular water time and average time, those sorts of issues. And. I have to say, considering it's, it's. One of the largest concerns here. I would suggest perhaps consideration be given and I don't know, I, I mean, I'm not an engineer and I'm not. Cognizant of the cost of doing this, but. This building in terms of mitigation of groundwater and flood control be overdesigned instead of. Designed to whatever the particular flow measurements show. Cause we're now in this period of climate change experiencing more like, um, hundred-year events. Every five or 10 years and thousand-year events every hundred years. And I'm thinking perhaps designing to a higher standard would mitigate the concern and potential impact of this development on the area. We're removing a significant amount of trees that aren't necessarily, you know, glorious examples of trees, but trees. You know, help control floodplain water and, and, and removing the vegetation, be it invasive or not, is removing vegetation. And replacing it with vegetation certainly is the right thing to do, but vegetation controls flooding and floodwater control. So I would make one last. Hail Mary pitch to overdesigning the flood control of this. To mitigate the fact that flooding is going to be, it just feels intuitively is going to be an outcome of this development. So thanks very much. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Just ask Mr. Heschin to just briefly. Comment on, I know the, it requested specifically that the applicant use a higher. Rainfall predictive model than is currently in common usage. I just wanted to ask you to just briefly touch on that. And is there any relation between that figure and the flood elevation? And you're unmuted.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, I could touch on a, on a couple of things. To identify where this project is, you know, designing to a higher standard. Under 40B, this project is required to be designed to, for stormwater to the, to Massachusetts stormwater standards. We originally designed the stormwater, uh, the drainage system to meet the local Arlington local wetland regulations, which requires a more intense. Rainfall precipitation event than the state does. And since that, since that time, we've increased the precipitation data to. Um, kind of at the request of the Conservation Commission to use the NOAA 14 plus data, which the state Commonwealth of Massachusetts is looking. To potentially adopt. Additionally, with respect to compensatory flood storage under the Wetlands Protection Act, the state standards. Compensatory storage is required at a one-to-one ratio. The local Arlington wetland regulations require a two-to-one. So in meeting the two-to-one where we're exceeding the, you know, the minimum requirement of the state standard. And then lastly, it's been quite some time, but we looked at. We were asked to look at the city of Cambridge, you know, Arlington doesn't have advanced flood modeling, but the city of Cambridge does. And directly across Route Two, we looked at the 2070 sea level rise. Storm surge flood event in, you know, in this area. And it would raise the hundred-year floodplain from 6.8 to approximately 11, so about four feet. And we've designed the finished floors of all of the buildings to be, the duplexes are one foot above that. 2070, um, sea level rise, flood elevation. The finished floor is set at elevation 12. And then the, the senior living building is set even higher than that at elevation 16. So, um, we do believe that there's been a lot of effort. Put in over the course of the design and review of this project to, to, um, in response to the commentators, questions or, or points to. Kind of over-design or design to a higher standard with respect to stormwater management and flooding.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Moore, do you have anything further?
Uh, only that, that those comments are helpful to hear, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, uh, Mr. Krupp. They have done Larry Krupp.
It is, yes. Hi, Larry Krupp. I live over on Fairmont Street. I think anybody who knows this area knows just how congested the roads are. Lake Street in particular, you know, that whole area is a mess under, under normal conditions. I looked over the traffic numbers and I'm just, I'd like to know on top of that already congested situation. How many additional vehicles will be added to that every day? And what vehicles is that covering? Is it covering? You know, the people who live there? Is it covering the trucks and service vehicles that come and go, the garbage vehicles? Um, it sounds like there's some uncertainty about exactly what kind of services will be. Even offered at the location. And if you don't know those services, have, you know, has it covered? Have you know how many employees are going to work there, et cetera? But is it five, 600 cars a day? Is it, is it more than that?
Um, if I could. Uh, direct this question to Mr. Roach.
Yes, the current, um. Numbers that we ran for the trip generation indicate that there'll be around 400 vehicles a day from the site.
Total.
Is that just personal vehicles or is, does that include service?
That includes, so the, the ITE trip generation numbers are, are, are averages of, of, of. Uh, empirical counts of sites across the country. Um, and so they include all vehicles entering and exiting those sites to create the trip rates that we use. So these numbers would include. All of the users of the site.
And, and for a site with this particular population group, is that correct or is it just a?
Technically, 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 as, as Mr. Hanlon pointed out, we are, we are actually using a trip generation, uh, uh, rate that is. For land use code that, 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 that is a higher trip generator than what we would expect this, the site to have. So we're actually being conservative and. Reality, we would expect that number to be less than 400.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp.
If, if I might just follow up for, just quickly, that's 400. I'm looking at your report. It looks like there's 474. Total.
You might be looking, you might be looking at the original report. There's an updated analysis in an August 3rd letter.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, August 3rd.
Yeah, so it should be 412.
Four 12 total from all of the housing units, senior living plus the townhouses.
That's correct.
And that covers Amazon delivery vehicles and all the other service vehicles, et cetera.
Yes, the, like I said, the, the, the chip generations, the chip generate that, the trip rates from ITE. Are based on empirical counts of, of sites throughout the country and they count every type of vehicle that enters and exits those sites. That would include delivery vehicles, workers, residents, visitors.
Yeah, so that's a ballpark of 3,000 a week added to an already highly congested area. Not to mention, a, and that's a neighborhood that's also in a very small neighborhood, right? Not just the general area. That means 3,000 a week roughly, give or take. Turning onto Lake Street, left or right at intersections where there's no traffic light. Right? That's what we're talking about here.
So it would be at Little John, I believe, yes.
Yeah.
Unsignaled.
Yeah, I mean. Anybody, I would think at least as a person that lives in the neighborhood. And then, you know, presumably some of those cars will turn right and head to Mass Ave where all the commercial businesses are. Yeah, to me, that's, that's just a huge number.
Well, I think, you know, one thing I'd like to add that, that I think is very important.
Mr. Cliffell?
Yeah, is that okay if I just respond to that a little bit?
Uh, if you do it through the chair, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, I will go through the chair. Thank you very much. Uh, the, the trips to this particular facility, uh, which we analyzed are, are not going to be peak hours in the majority. There'll be a few people leaving and coming at peak hours, but most of the. Residents, because it's so hard to get onto Lake Avenue, will choose to go because they have a choice, most of them. Most of them don't commute, as somebody said earlier. So they will leave at 10 or 11 or whatever and come back in the afternoon and try to avoid peak hour. And all the waitstaff is not at peak hour. The people that, there are about eight people on the waitstaff and then three cooks that would probably come and they are all off peak hours. So I think it's important to consider that, that it's not, in terms of the Lake Street impact. Uh, it's not as great as might be indicated by the number of trips that are measured by these criteria.
Thank you.
That, that appears to be different from the conclusion in the VAI traffic report for August 3rd. Is the VAI guy here? Can he comment on that? Is that right? The, the, are you claiming in their report that the vast majority of the, these daily trips would, would be on non-peak hours? Is that right?
Mr. Roach?
So the ITA trip generation numbers in what we ran in, assumes the trips during the peak hours. What, what Art is, is saying is that in reality. Um, based on being able to schedule deliveries and set employee shifts, that we would be able to shift most of those outside of peak hours.
If, if I can speak to this also.
If I can let the, the person who, the person for the public who's calling in, if I can let them speak for a minute, please. Mr. Krupp, uh, did you?
I actually, I think I see the numbers, how they work in the report. I'm just not sure if it makes, so I, I think I get the point here, but it doesn't make logical sense to me. I don't think you have control over when doctor's appointments are scheduled. I don't think you have control over when doctor's appointments are scheduled. You've got an aging population, like when my father was at one of these types of facilities for the last 10 years. You know, you've got haircut appointments, you've got doctor's appointments, you had Amazon trucks, you've got all sorts of things you can't control. Yes, probably the handful or dozen of employees who worked there, you might be able, you know, regulate that. You got holidays when people come to visit their elderly loved ones. I'm not sure the assumptions in this are going to end up holding water. I mean, and again, for me, if you know where Fairmont Street is, you know, I'm not impacted directly by the turn, you know, I live in a little bit further away, but the poor people who live in that neighborhood are, yikes, yikes is all I gotta say.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ms. Stamps.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am Susan Stamps. I'm on the tree committee, and so I had a couple of tree questions.
For the record, sorry.
I'm sorry?
You need your address for the record.
I'm 39 Grafton Street.
Thank you.
So is the, I, I know that originally the team had requested a waiver from the tree bylaw. Is that, is that going through or what's happening with that?
He first, that's still included on the list? I apologize, I'm not.
It is still on the waiver list.
Okay.
I would ask, how many trees are, are being planned to be removed from the site?
So that would be the, in, that would be, would that be for the development or the development plus the, plus the compensatory storage, plus the conservation areas? I'm just sort of trying to get a sense of the scope.
Yeah, well, it's a good question. I guess for the whole, let's leave the conservation area off, because I think we'll assume that the trees being removed there are simply not so, not for any utility particularly, but to, like, make the forest healthier. So if you can, you can split those out if you want to, but in terms of, so you can build the facility and do the flood storage area and all the other site work, how many trees are we talking about?
Mr. Hessian, I don't think you have a fixed number, but what, what is the, the land area that would be, that is, would be impacted?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just type in first, relative to the, the bylaw that's applicable, I believe the requirement that we've asked a waiver for is that the developers to identify mature trees of diameter 10 inches or greater within the property's legal setback yards. And then trees to be removed and setbacks to be replaced by two and a half inch caliber. So it's, it's kind of defined there what that, what that area is. It's not just generally, is, as I read the bylaw provision.
Okay.
Yeah, it is. That is what the bylaw said at the time that you filed. When did you first file the application?
2016.
Yeah, so that's what it said. Correct. Well, do you know how many trees you're talking about? Are we talking 10 trees? Are we talking 110 trees?
Plus, I was gonna ask Mr. Hessian sort of what the land area is that, that'll give us a, us.
Well, we don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't have that number, you know, off the top of my head. But in our waiver request, we state that the applicant agrees to submit tree plan to the board prior to issuance of a building permit to designate such trees in setback area of 10-inch diameter or more indicating weather replacement. So we're, we're, we're saying we're, we're gonna do it, but we don't have that information now. And, and I guess a question, would that, as the development parcel and the conservation parcel has evolved, you know, the setback, I believe the setback area would be determined based on what we're proposing currently as the, as the development parcel. So if there's any modifications to that, that might, might also have a, an impact on what that ultimate number is gonna be.
But do you know the acreage of the development parcel? I know 12, 12 acres is the other side, so I just can't remember if we're subtracting from 17.7 or what the?
The 5.66 acres is the development parcel.
Well, okay, so we don't know how many trees. But did you have a plan to, to essentially comply with the bylaw? Sounds like you did. Are you going to be replacing the inches lost?
That's what the waiver, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what our waiver, waiver request currently states.
Yes. Okay, so you're going, you're going to, you're gonna submit a tree plan, but you're not going to compensate the town for removal of trees, which the bylaw requires. Is that, is that what it is?
I believe the requirement is either replace the tree or pay a replacement.
Under the old version of the bylaw, were you planning on doing that? I still don't have an answer.
The waiver request, so the, this tree plan that we agreed to submit will indicate whether replacement by two and a half inch caliber tree onsite or payment of the $500 to the tree fund. So that work, the number of trees, the counting, first of all, the, the boundary of the development parcel has not been finalized, so we can't identify what the setbacks are in that development parcel till that's finalized. And when we have that, we will be able to go out and stake that in the field, do that tree inventory, and then determine what trees are being planted as part of the current landscape plan. Do they need to be supplemented for, you know, potentially the payment in lieu of an actual planting?
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I ask a couple of other questions?
Ask them through me.
Yes. So my question is, number one, as far as trees that are planted, is there a watering plan? Will they be responsible, will you be responsible for them for a couple of years until they get, you know, they're safe in the ground?
If on.
Was there any, yeah. I mean, I guess my bottom line, Mr. Chairman, is that it's, I think this is what Ms. Chapnick said, although I don't really understand conservation issues. I think she was saying that, yeah, they're going to comply with these, with the, the local regulations. But she didn't want to waive, she didn't want to waive them. And like, and you could wonder, well, why would the town waive them since they're going to comply? And I would ask the same question of the tree bylaw. It sounds like the intention is to do what it said a few years ago, although unfortunately, the bylaw is a much stronger now, but that's not going to apply. So I, I guess I would also say that I, I would object to, to the waiver of the tree bylaw. And would hope that they will take responsibility for making sure the trees get a good start in life for at least the first two years. And then the second item, and this is the only other thing I, I have, is I was looking at that, this, this, the sketch of the, the, when you were talking about the fire truck going in and in the circle, and that was the main entrance. Is there any overhang there in the main entrance? It looks like, it seems to me that that main entrance is in a place where people are gonna want to sit and hang out, see people coming and going, kind of like their own little village square. It doesn't look like there's any shade there. I didn't see any greenery there. I saw a little greenery, but I didn't see any shade or awnings or roofs or, or pergolas or anything that would make that a comfortable place to be in hot weather.
So it does face north? So it will be in shadow most of the time. But if I could ask Mr. Glassik, I know that there's a canopy immediately at the entry doors. Is there any other shading features in the entry area?
It looked very barren. That whole entrance looked very unwelcoming to me. And that was really all the comments I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if you wanted me to add anything to that.
Just briefly, yeah.
So, yeah, you're correct, Mr. Chairman. It faces north. There is, you know, an expanded sidewalk area, you know, that could be an area where potentially some, some benches would be placed, but I think, and, and, you know, maybe Art and Gwen want to add something to this. I don't think we were necessarily conceiving of that area, you know, again, subject to maybe an operator coming in and giving us some more, you know, thoughts on that. We weren't really conceiving this area as, you know, a place to gather or sit. I think that was contemplated as more of the south, this area that I'm highlighting with my mouse right now. That was kind of the purpose of that porch area that Art was mentioning earlier, so.
I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next on my list, Jennifer Griffiths.
Hi, thank you.
Hello.
My name's Jennifer Griffith. I live at 4 Edith Street. So I'm in a butter to the Mugar property. And I've also lived in this neighborhood for almost 30 years now. And so I'm sort of all about the water and the flooding. So I have a few questions. And so one is about, you know, when we get a lot of rain, like we had just last week, the municipal stormwater system really can't handle more than it sort of already gets. You know, the Aleweyf Brook level, you know, it's all just fed by gravity and the Aleweyf Brook comes up, and so there's not very much of a head change. And so I just want to know about the site putting any water into the municipal stormwater system, including when your garage floods and it needs to be pumped out. So I want to just know, yes or no, is any water gonna go into the municipal stormwater system?
Mr. Hessian? So the question is whether the, there's any water from this project that would go into the municipal system?
There's no water proposed, no stormwater runoff proposed from this site into the municipal system. The garage is being designed to not flood. The entrance will have, you know, that we've raised the elevation of the garage, and the driveway access to it is being designed so that it will not, you know, the flood elevation will not enter the garage. So there'll be no pumping from a flooded garage to the municipal system.
Well, I, I don't believe that anything below the ground surface is, is never gonna flood. I, I just, I don't believe that, but good luck to you with that. So the other piece is, I think there's onsite stormwater retention ponds, and I'm very concerned about those. That's sort of localized, raising the groundwater level in that area. And there are homes that are not that far from where, where those ponds are. And I'm just really concerned that those will be impacted when stormwater is directed there. So I don't know if someone can comment on that. And I think that's the kind of thing that would be good to address in whatever written write-up you're gonna, you're gonna submit that the board, you know, has talked about.
Mr. Hessian?
There is subsurface infiltration facilities proposed as part of the design and submission of the, with the stormwater management report. Groundwater mounting analyses were conducted, and the results of those show that there will be no impacts on any off-site properties. I believe it was in Beta's, not their most recent peer review letter, but the one prior to that, where they raised that it might, it should, it's something that should be considered in the design of the senior living building and the duplexes, but nothing off-site. And I also believe when the geotechnical engineer from McPhail and Associates presented a few hearings ago, he also presented information that the, the groundwater mounting from those onsite infiltration systems will not cause problems to off-site properties.
All right. And then my, my, I've got all kinds of concerns about this proposal, because I think overall it's just too large. But one of my other big concerns is about sewage. This is the big, 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 this is a lot of people flushing a lot of stuff, using a lot of water. And I have serious concerns about the capacity of the stormwater, I mean, of the stormwater, the sewage system and the piping. Again, not everything's tight. We've had issues before about sewage and this manholes during really, really bad flooding that we had in 1996 and in 2010. You know, the sewage system is also not capable of handling everything. So I'm really concerned about adding just this huge amount of sewage to the system. And I'm wondering what you've done and how you can assure that the system is capable of handling all this.
Mr. Hessian, I don't know if that's a question you can address, or if that's.
There's, we've, we've addressed that in prior response to comments to the, to town comments. Any, any specific deficiencies in the system where we're connecting into Arthi Road? You know, is, is the project's responsibility to, to address if, if that pipe needs to be replaced. But I know the town has been going through, over the course of many years, the INI study and mitigation program. We have not, to this point, gotten any information on what's been completed or what the plans are for, you know, for the town to address, you know, this concern in, in this neighborhood.
Yeah, I think I just, I'll just close with saying, you know, I'm downstream in both the stormwater system and the sewage system from this property. And, and folks, you know, further along, so the gentleman that lives over on Fairmont Street, he's, he's even a little further along the line. So it, this project doesn't just potentially impact direct neighbors, but folks further down those systems. So anyway, I just have serious concerns about the capacity of, of either one to handle bigger, a big development like this. So and I really want to express my appreciation to the zoning board. You guys are like superheroes. You do so much work and it's all volunteer. And as a resident and citizen of the town, I just really want to thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Appreciate that. Um, next on my list is Marcy and Nick Ide.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Nicholas Ide. I live at 152 Lake Street. That's the corner of Lake and Little John. And I also would like to thank you for the opportunity to let the public speak. And I think it's, it's great that you guys give so much your time and so late in the day, and I appreciate that very much. I have two questions and comments. One is the, you know, the 412 trips per day. I also, like Mr. Krupp, have a hard time understanding how that's insignificant. I mean, if you think about a 12-hour day, that's 34 trips per hour. So that's like, So that's like one trip every two minutes. That's if everything's averaged down in a constant flow over 12 hours, which is probably not what's going to happen. And things are going to glut up and they already do glut up. And so I'm a little bit concerned about that. I know we talked about traffic ad nauseam, but you know, I really, really have a hard time understanding how that's insignificant. Because the only place people can go is to Lake Street. There is no other way out of that area except to get on Lake Street. So that is an influx of things onto Lake Street and they have to get to Lake Street from streets like Little John or, you know, maybe Homestead or what have you up further. But there's very few ways to get over to Lake Street. And so, you know, you're in a sleepy neighborhood that's now going to have all this extra traffic. So I just wanted to kind of raise that up a little bit. And then the, so it's really more of a comment, I guess. And the other thing I have is a question. I did notice the, the truck traffic. Illustrations were provided. I appreciate that very much. And I think there were a couple sets of those provided. And they show the, the very large truck with the trailer, that's the low boy trailer with the, goodness, seven sets of wheels in the back or whatever it is. It's quite a sizable thing. And on the pictures, you can see that, oh my goodness, in order for it to round the corner one way, it has to brush the curb on the one side. It's brushing the curb of everything, it barely can fit in there. And on the return trip, it's brushing the other sides of everything and can barely fit in there. Having lived here for 13 years, I can tell you for certain that the snow removal does not allow for that. I can guarantee you that there will be large mounds of snow, three to four feet high, that stick out five to six feet into the street on both sides at the corner of Lake and Little John. And I'm extremely concerned about this because my house is downstream of that. What happens is if somebody does come through and plow that out, it goes and blocks my driveway apron. Because what happens is Little John is the first thing where snow can dump into from a long stretch. And then if you're around the corner, that's where I'm going to be. And my question is, who on earth is going to remove all of this snow so that these people can run these trucks? The, I forget how many times a day they said they were going to run during the construction. But this whole thing to me is just, it's so oversized and pushing the envelope of anything that's possible or practical or feasible. And I really, I know a lot of us have said this before, it just seems like it's too much for this neighborhood. So I guess the only actual direct question there is how on earth is that snow going to be removed? Who is going to remove the snow?
Um. Mr. Kiefer, I don't know if you want to address that or if I should ask Mr. Clipful to address that question.
So just so I understand the question, so the question is for construction vehicles during the winter?
Yes.
Yeah, that's my understanding is that because the construction vehicles need the full width of the roadway and the town doesn't plow curb to curb, does, would the, would, would snow removal to allow the trucks to make their full turns, would that be something that would be included in the construction? The construction plan?
So I think, and Art, I'll have you chime in, but I believe the response is kind of multifaceted, actually. So. I don't know that construction in the winter is the ideal time that we would be, we'd be doing it. But secondly, even if there is some overlap in a winter period, construction is going to be detailed within the construction management plan. And that's, that's in coordination with Public Works and Police and Fire in terms of, I think we had shown one of our plans had like where we put those flaggers being. And then the, the third part of it also is that, that, that truck was assuming modular construction. So there may be flexibility on that as well. So as we proposed in our response to comments, we will be submitting a construction management plan. And we propose that the best time to do that is at the stage where we're, you know, when we have a contractor on board and these details are, you know, it's, it's a realistic document. And I know that sometimes, one of the things that is useful if a developer has like a website for the development, if they have kind of like, sometimes you call it like a look ahead, that gives the neighborhood updates. And I think that we would be amenable to doing that. It keeps not only the town officials informed, but it also keeps people in the neighborhood informed. So I don't know, Art, if you want to add anything to that response?
Mr. Chairman, I think the major thing is that the trucks that he's referring to would be the modules, assuming we built the project with, using modules. And that would not be done during a snow season. So I think that's not an issue.
And there's traffic managing too.
Um, Mr. I, did you have anything further?
Yeah, I guess just based on that, I'm a little surprised because every other meeting I've been to, it's been highly reliant on this modular construction. And that in fact has dictated the awful large size of everything. And so that's interesting. I guess if, if they're only going to do construction during the sunny months out of the year, then, you know, that's their business. So I think, I guess the answer is they will not deal with the snow because they're simply not going to work during three months out of the year. So, so let's, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, let me just add that the actual delivery of the modules, assuming this is built that way, would be in a matter of weeks, not months. And so it's, it's fairly easy to control that and avoid any kind of entanglement with snow. It's not, it's not something that goes on for three months very, very quick. And that's, you know, one of the advantages of modules is that the whole project goes faster. So the interruption of the neighborhood is, is rather severe.
Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Hanlon?
I just wanted to, because of where the discussion is, to remind everyone that one of Beta's points with respect to the, and one of the things that Mr. McGrath addressed with respect to the construction plan is providing something that it can be developed over time. As for example, the stormwater plan really is to, there's, it has lots of provisions for being fine tuned and changed over time. But where some of the major issues that we already kind of know the answers to can be sketched out in the beginning and details filled in as appropriate when things get closer. So that we don't have to choose either, we're trying to be over detailed now or delaying addressing the questions until way after this hearing is over. So Mr. McGrath has some suggestions about that. And I'm hoping that in the next several weeks, we can have a discussion of that to see if there's some way of bridging that difference and providing more assurances than more, some additional insurance. Because obviously this whole range of considerations is something that matters for the neighborhood. And at the same time, there's much that can't be done until you've got a construction manager and you're ready to go. And it should be that there's a compromise in terms of the timing there.
All right, thank you. So we are at 10:12 and I have four names on the list and I will absolutely get to those four names. But. If we could, if, if the, if the public is amenable to keeping it to those four, that would be, that would be appreciated. Next up is Sarah Ogden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Sarah Ogden. I live at 73 Dorothy Roads. So I am directly across the road from the development. I have three comments and a question. First of all, I would like to iterate the neighborhood comment with regard to giving thanks to yourself, Chairman Klein, and other board members for the time that you've taken to do a deep delve into this development and move the project forward in a, in a meaningful way. I would also like to thank Mr. Hanlon for his earlier comment tonight about requesting a more comprehensive overview of the flood mitigation strategies proposed by the applicant for our neighborhood. I specifically want to touch on that point as if you had traveled in our neighborhood over the last seven to 10 days, you will see that despite the fact that it's the end of August, the middle of the summer, we have had excessive flooding. Numerous basements have had floodwaters several feet deep. You only had to walk the neighborhood to see multiple people's sump pumps pumping out into the road, pumping out into their garden, the water then draining back into their basements. So I really want to sort of build on the comments that Ms. Stamps and a few others have made today. So my primary concern is flooding. I have a drain at the bottom of my driveway. I'm a relatively new development. I was built in 2003. I flooded once. But even a couple of weeks ago with the recent rainfall, we had the surface water level inches, inches below my driveway and my basement. Others who are at a slightly lower elevation on Mary Street, they were completely flooded. And pumping that out is just not a possibility because you're trying to pump out the, the, you know, the water table, which is almost impossible to do. So that's a long preamble, but really the question that I would like to ask to Mr. Hessian is I understand that it's very difficult to try and have exact numbers in, in place. But given the fact that the tree ordinance says that if you remove a 10-inch tree, you only need to replace it with a two-and-a-half-inch diameter tree or pay $500 per tree to the tree fund. So when you are doing your compensatory storage, do you take into consideration the excess water that is not being consumed by a two-and-a-half-inch diameter tree compared to the 10-inch tree that you have removed? I'm certainly not a tree warden, but it is my understanding that a one-inch diameter tree consumes somewhere in the region of 10 gallons of water per week, per tree. So if you're removing a 10-inch tree, which is approximately 45 years old, you are taking out a tree that's consuming about 100 gallons of water per week. And you are only going to replace that either with $500, which doesn't consume any water, or a two-and-a-half-inch diameter tree, which consumes 25 gallons of water. Is that differential taken into consideration when you are developing the compensatory water storage to prevent our neighborhood from flooding further?
Mr. Hessian, is that a question you can address? You're on mute though.
I can try. It's, it's not a question that can be addressed specifically, but there, there's a number of different things in that, the floodplain storage and then the compensatory flood storage doesn't really relate to the existing tree, you know, canopy tree caliper that, that's on site. But the the conservation commission's requirement for a two-to-one compensatory storage volume does, I guess, in, in essence, indirectly provide a little factor of safety there that, so with, with the fill of that floodplain, we're, we're, we're providing twice the volume to address what's been missed. And, and the other way indirectly that I guess it's considered is in the stormwater management design and the recharge requirements to groundwater. We're recharging stormwater from all the impervious areas on the site. So it's not the same as, you know, the, the trees, in, in, in lack of a better term, drinking that rainfall, but it's, it's a way of mimicking what is going back into the water table, the groundwater through collecting that stormwater from those impervious surfaces and recharging it into the groundwater.
Thank you for that. Ms. Ogden, anything further?
If I may respond, Chairman Klein?
Please.
Thank you. So, um, you know, this may be a very simplistic question. So even if you don't build anything, even if you just remove a one 10-inch diameter tree, potentially that drinks 100 gallons of, of water a week from an area, this is one tree, from an area, and you just replace from a floodplain, which does flood, you only have to stop by our neighborhood now and you will see it in flood. And you replace that with a two-and-a-half-inch tree, which would potentially consume 25 gallons of water or $500 to the tree fund, which consumes zero gallons of water. Is the differential per tree taken into consideration when you're doing your compensatory storage? Because this volume of water needs to be taken into consideration because this volume of water is going to end up in our neighborhood, even without you building anything, just the removal of the tree. And I understand that it's, it's challenging and you, you haven't done a full survey of the site to, to get a handle on how many trees are there, how big they are. And you've got to remember, many, many, many of the trees over there are much larger than 10 inches. Much larger, so they consume much greater volumes of water. And it's a concern at the moment. The flooding here is bad as, at the moment. So removing trees and replacing them with two-and-a-half-inch trees is just not going to figure into how it's not going to create an even worse situation for flooding in our neighborhood.
Well, thank you for that. I was going through your neighborhood today and just seeing all the piles of sandbags at the end of people's driveways is a little disconcerting.
Very much needed as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So thank you, Chairman Klein.
Thank you. Next on my list. Is Lisa Fredman?
Hi, thank you. I'm Lisa Fredman. I live at 63 Mott Street. And like the previous speakers, I really, really appreciate your concern about the butters and the neighbors' comments and questions. So I'd like to add to Mr. Krupp's comments about the traffic impact. And Chairman Klein, I don't know when you came to our neighborhood today, but I'm sure that if you tried to turn right or even turn left on any street from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, the only street you could have entered our neighborhood on was Burt Street. So all of these comments about how the 400 extra cars per day will only impact Little John Street is kind of astounding to me. I mean, what I see are lots of cars going down Mott Street, which is one way. And it's an adorable street and lots of people and lots of families and lots of kids walk down this street. I also see lots of cars turning right from the development onto Dorothy and then onto Thorndike Street. Thorndike Street is the access to the dog park and to the soccer fields. And if anyone comes into our neighborhood at any time, any afternoon, you won't find any parking available in the parking lot by Thorndike Field because all of the people who are going to the dog park and to the soccer games that their kids are playing are there. And so the idea that this community, which is such a lovely, walkable, family-oriented community can handle 400 more cars and they'll, a day, and they'll only go down Little John is kind of astounding to me. And the impact on the entire community will be felt. And I also just want to say, I mean, I think a lot of us understand development is inevitable. And most of us feel that the townhouses would be fine. It's just the senior living complex that's raising so many environmental, traffic and people-oriented questions. And as someone who just turned 65, I'm really concerned about the attitude about older adults. You know, I mean, older adults who need senior housing need so many services, as Mr. Krupp and I have talked about at previous meetings. And those of us who are seniors are actually quite independent and probably don't need the type of services that you're proposing because it's sort of an. because it's sort of an easy out to get, to get a development there. So my main concern is how the entire neighborhood is going to be impacted by these four hundred extra cars, especially during the periods when you can only turn into our neighborhood through Birch Street. That's a real concern and it seems to have been totally overlooked by the development team. And then how so many of the other aspects of our neighborhood really, I think will be jeopardized by adding the senior housing. So those are my comments.
Thank you for that. Um, I did just have a quick follow-up question for Mr. Roach. What, what is the current? Um, do we have current figures for the number of cars that are in this neighborhood on a given day?
Uh, from what the site's going to produce or what's there existing?
Or existing. For the no build condition.
For the no build condition. Yeah, I don't think they've changed since the original. Now, so I gotta pull them up.
Mr. Roach, when was the initial analysis done?
November twenty twenty, but that's just the, he's asking specifically about um, development of the no build conditions.
The no build conditions is what it would be like, I think, like five, ten years after the opening, assuming that nothing is built.
Right, assuming the project isn't built, correct? Um, so what specific volume of which, which road were you looking at?
Well, basically, we're talking about adding four hundred twelve trips to the neighborhood. So I'm curious what the number of trips is currently.
Oh, I was just saying, I say on the, the side streets, I think we do an A T R to get daily volumes on Lake Streets here.
So I wasn't sure if you have numbers specific for the neighborhood that is sort of neighborhood generated trips.
Well, again, I could tell you what's coming in and out of the side streets on the peak hours. But I do not have daily, we, we, we don't have daily volumes for all of the different side streets. I think we did. Doesn't even look like we do have that either.
Okay.
Um, so I don't think we have daily volumes on those. But I, I have peak hour volumes from the, from the counts that we conducted.
I see.
And then adjusted for COVID and then grown to twenty twenty-seven. If you want Littlejohn, Birch Street, Margaret, I, I have A M. P. M.
We don't have, we don't, I, I'm just trying to get a, a sense because I, a, a number of people have sort of raised that, the question that four hundred twelve sounds like a really big number. Um, and so I'm trying to equate that to what the number, the number is otherwise to get a, a better sense as to what that.
Yeah, I, like, like I'm saying, I, I, we, we did peak hour counts.
Yeah.
Right? So we, we, we only have four hours of counts at the intersections. So we don't have a daily number for you what's coming in. Now, what we could do is we could uh, get an estimate of the number of houses that are in the area and, and do an I T trip generation for single family houses and, and, and tell you what that is. But I, I also don't have that in front of me.
Oh, we lost your audio.
Oh.
Well, I think you could also add the number of kids to play soccer at Thorndike Field during off hours and calculate at least one car per kid. And then add the number of people who go to the dog park. And I would calculate three quarters of them have cars and they're going through the neighborhood. And then I would also add the number of people who don't park at the L Y T station, who park in our neighborhood. And I've noticed over the past couple of months that more and more people are parking in our neighborhood instead of going to the L Y T station.
Yeah.
So we're really overcrowded right now as it is.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, uh, could I make a comment?
Um, briefly, but I've got other people I need to get to.
All right, I just wanted to add a little bit about, uh, number one. We did think that that four hundred and twelve number is based on a younger population, uh, which might be driving. And I, I, I just think it's really important to keep in mind because we felt that we were making a, some real progress by making the senior housing. Because it's self-regulating, you know, people, residents that have a choice will not come and go at peak hours. The staff has a choice. They won't come at peak hours. Even doctors and, and people who come and visit, they won't come at peak hours because of Lake Street. So you can't, it's very hard to take a bunch of numbers that are not on a street like Lake Street and, and extrapolated. And I'm only saying that because we felt like we were really making progress. As, as you know, we weren't asked to do senior housing. We, we went there.
I don't think, I don't think anybody's. Yeah, otherwise, I think we're, we're just trying to get a better feel for what the overall, you know, what the, you know, is it? I, I think we're just trying to, you know, just get a sensory sense as to, you know, what it really is. But that has nothing to do with, you know, the, the efforts the applicant has made to uh, come up with alternate proposals that have, you know, vastly reduced the amount of traffic impact.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, please.
Uh, this is Pat. I, I just wanted to, I think that there's a certain degree of talking past one another going on here. The analysis that's been done so far is focused on the peak hour, where you're talking about some numbers in the neighborhood about of around twenty-five trips an hour. Um, and what Ms. Griffith is, is raising, or maybe it wasn't Ms. Griffith, I'm, I'm, Ms. Ogden is raising, is something different from that. She's suggesting that daily counts matter as much for a different reason. And that is that, uh, the neighborhood itself has got more traffic in it already than it knows what to do with. And adding all of these trips, regardless of the congestion issue, but just having more activity itself diminishes the quality of life in the neighborhood. So I think, you know, we need to sort of deal with, we need to focus on the fact that there are two different considerations here. One is what are you adding to congestion? Uh, and that's what the report that we have really focuses on. And the other is the possibility that just increasing the average amount of trips throughout the day uh, will increase the activity in the neighborhood in a way, way that the neighborhood would object to.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. Appreciate that. Um, uh, Mr. Fredman, do you have anything further?
Sorry, unmuted. No, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks for the summary, Mr. Hamlin.
Um, next on my list is Robin Doughty.
Thank you, Chairman Klein. This is actually Shona Gibson of one oh seven Mary Street. I'm on Robin Doughty's computer. Um, I'm the person who's the nurse practitioner who, uh, spends several days a week working over at the, uh, the assisted living facility at Illwifely Brook Parkway. Um, I have just a question and then I just wanted to share um, uh, just a, a brief anecdote of something that I think is germane. Uh, my question is regarding the traffic flow around the proposed senior living facility, or I, I suppose around the whole development, uh, entering from, uh, Littlejohn and, um, exiting onto Dorothy. Is, is that a one-way traffic flow or, or two-way?
Um, could ask Mr. Hessian to confirm, but I believe there's, there's a single entrance to the main portion of the building, which would be a two-way um, roadway at the corner of Littlejohn and Dorothy Road. And then the, the townhouses would have their own separate entrances.
Okay, and so, um, it would, it would be two-way, uh, going from Littlejohn into the, um, the senior living and then able to exit back out onto Littlejohn?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And so, um, in the case of an emergency vehicle, and I know we've spoken at other meetings about the fact that there will be a, a somewhat steady flow of emergency vehicles, um, if we build a senior living facility. The, it was concerning to me to hear that, um, just due to the size of something like a fire truck, uh, they would be able to drive around the building. But I, I heard, um, a description of them having to, uh, perhaps mount a curb, um, just due to the width of the truck. And, um, also having to back up in front of the building because they, um, they would get to the, to the front entrance, but not be able to continue. Just due, due to the design. And I, I actually think that this whole thing just, just actually points to the fact that it's too much building in this type of space. But the, the, the brief anecdote I just wanted to tell, which is, um, sadly, it's a true story that happened to one of my patients up at, um, Illwife, is I think, um, uh, you know, we are talking about folks in their, uh, maybe mid to upper seventies, all the way into their nineties and, um, you know, at, at those ages, you know, certain things are just true, whether or not you're i- in relatively good health for your age or not. You are older and, um, uh, one of my, uh, patients was, was very sadly knocked over by a garbage truck. Um, uh, and, you know, badly injured and hospitalized, et cetera. And I, I just want to make the point that, that we worry over at that building all the time about, um, the folks who are the residents of the building, being out and about in front of the building. Uh, you know, uh, socializing, just hanging out, et cetera. But we worry about folks a lot in terms of the traffic that comes up there. And, uh, this was just a particularly awful thing that actually ended up happening to this lady. But it's, it's something that people talk about on a daily basis is so and so safe, is so and so safe to be out there by themselves. Um, I, I know this might sound a little patronizing to people who are not in this line of work. It's not intended to be patronizing in any way. It's just a reality of, um, as, as all of us get older, um, our, some of our sensory ability diminishes, some of our ability to, to move the way we used to when we were young diminishes. And sometimes our cognition diminishes. So I worry a lot about that. I worry a lot about somebody perhaps, uh, walking on the sidewalk at the back and then not realizing that a fire truck is uh, perhaps coming around the corner of the back of the building in a hurry. Um, maybe having to mount the curb there and somebody not having the wherewithal to get out of the way. Um, so I just think it's important for folks to realize that stuff like that really happens. Um, and just to, 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 just to finally just say, I, I really wholeheartedly, I, I agree with all of my neighbors who, who say, uh, we understand that development happen, happens. Uh, we could live with six townhouses on Dorothy Road. We would be happy to have new neighbors. But, uh, this doesn't fit into our neighborhood. It dwarfs us and is going to, um, have all sorts of completely unintended consequences, um, which we are, uh, quite concerned about. So thank you and the rest of the Z B A for your time and, um, for your attention to this. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
That's, thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate your, your, uh, your sad anecdote. I do hope that person is, is on the mend. Um, the last name I have on my list is Martha Ingalls.
Yes, hi, this is Martha Ingalls at one forty-eight Herbert Road.
Appreciate your patience.
I have two comments, a comment and an idea. The comment is that the idea that you're going to have this population of people come and live in this area and once they've moved in, they're going to discover that it doesn't make sense to try and go anywhere at rush hour. And God forbid they have a heart attack at five thirty in the evening or eight o'clock in the morning. An ambulance would have trouble getting to them. That seems like a bait and switch situation, and I don't think it's kind or fair or moral to suggest people move into this situation. The suggestion that I have is tangentially related. It's also about traffic. Um, one thing that causes the huge number of projected vehicle trips in and out of the neighborhood is the fact that there's no retail at all within three quarters of a mile of the site. Every time a resident wants to buy a cup of coffee, a bottle of aspirin, or some toilet paper, they will either drive somewhere or place an order for it to be delivered by vehicle. If it were possible to include a small convenience store within the common space of the development, that would cut down on traffic and could benefit the neighbors in the pre-existing neighborhood too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Um, so with that, I'm just gonna go ahead and close the public comment period for this evening. Um, interesting, sorry, it's just an interesting, an interesting recommendation. I had not considered that. Um, so going forward for us, uh, we had discussed previously, um, that continuing this evening, our continuation date would be September twenty eighth. Just want to confirm that that date was still good for, um, both the applicant and for, uh, for Paul Haverty as well.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I thought that the hearing was to close by the se- by the seventeen.
In my notes, um, I had.
You can talk October first.
Is it October first?
I believe so. That's, it's the Friday after the twenty eighth.
Okay, was I, was I looking at the prior version then?
Yes, there once was a time when it was.
Okay.
I know I had, okay, yeah, that makes sense because I think at the last hearing I had, I proposed that we close the public hearing on October eighth. But you were, but the applicant had asked that we change that to the first.
Okay.
And I believe that's what we had approved. Um, do I need to change that on the, on the website? Because I believe I had the eighth put up on the website. Um, so the board, we currently have a hearing scheduled for the fourteenth. Um, so we have three, we have three regular hearings on the. And so we were planning to continue to the twenty eighth. Um, is there a recommendation to possibly move that up to the, I think, to the, I know the, to the twenty first? Or had we intentionally moved to the twenty eighth because we were, there's a holiday that week that we may have been trying to avoid?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, please.
Um, and I, I actually defer to Mister Haverty. But my recollection was that the intention with the hearing on the twenty eighth was to potentially make that the last hearing and the subject matter would be a review of a draft of conditions that, uh, would be produced between, between now and then, based on everything that we've, that we've got. Um, so obviously, if that's true, moving it up is not a very good idea because it puts more, either more pressure on Mister Haverty to write the conditions or more pressure on us to figure out what they mean. Um, and so I, I do think it might be worth asking Mister Haverty whether he still can, is, can, can accommodate that, that schedule. But obviously, the last hearing date that we have needs to be a time when the public and when the applicant and when we can begin, you know, focusing in on the condition so that we understand what everybody thinks about it before we go into the deliberation phase. So if we don't get to that point on the twenty eighth, we, I think we need to be looking at some date beyond the twenty eighth because that last step has got to happen.
Absolutely. And I, my, my notes concur with what, what you've just said, that we were looking to, to begin the draft discussion on the twenty eighth, uh, so we could have public comment on it. Um, does there have any, would, does that work with your schedule?
Going to be tight getting a decision to you by the twenty eighth. I was hoping to have received suggestive revisions by the applicant to the. I was hoping to have received suggestive revisions by the applicant in advance of that.
Okay.
In particular, there's been quite a number of changes to the plan set that would be helpful to get that. In a narrative form. Definitely the twenty-first is. So I think we can shoot for the twenty-eighth, be discussing a draft decision. And I'll do my best to get it to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
If if we got a draft decision on the twenty-eighth and everybody else did too. There won't be enough time to actually make the hearing on the twenty-eighth very useful. Uh, now, a lot of the purpose of this last business is actually. To benefit the applicant and making sure that the applicant has the opportunity to let us know what they think. Uh, about all of this, and I wonder. If, given the time constraints that even the twenty-eighth suggests. I wonder if Ms. Kiefer has any new thinking about. What would be appropriate in terms of us giving her an opportunity and ourselves an opportunity to. Think about these conditions before we go into deliberation, when, as you know. We have to be blind, deaf, and dumb, and we can't say, we're not dumb, actually. Uh, uh, and can't get any new information. I I'm concerned that everybody has an opportunity. To sign off on something they've had an opportunity to address.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
If I may respond to Mr. Hamlin.
Yeah.
Um. I. And again, maybe I'm looking at old information, but I I anticipated that. At one point, we talked about um, the draft. And Paul, I'm not trying to do anything here to put either one of us in a bind, but I had at being nine twenty-three that a draft was to be circulated. Is that, is that, was I looking at it, and still an old one where I had that down in my notes?
That may have been a target day shooting war. Um, but but again, I haven't, the new information just came in in the last couple of days.
Right, no, I hear you.
Yeah, and I haven't seen, you know, your proposed revisions to the earlier decision. So right now, I would be starting at point zero. In drafting a decision, and I'm not sure that that's good, be sufficient in time.
So if I could ask for a clarification, Mr. Chairman, the the next hearing would just be to review. Proposed conditions, is that?
So the original intention, I think, had been that, you know. Is doing the close of this hearing. Um, the seat, the the session of the hearing this evening, assuming that we feel that we've gotten. You know, a good sense as to what the project entails, which I think we have. Um, which is the, sorry, the intention of the last, you know, four, six weeks of work. Would be that we would try to put together a. Draft decision that we could discuss at the twenty eighth. But obviously, we need to work with with everyone's schedules and to make sure that we have. Um. You know, sufficient time to put it together in a in a timely fashion so that we all have an opportunity to look at it before the meeting. Um, and so I think what. You know, what Mr. Haverty is saying is that. You know, absent of. You know, a lot of comment um. In relation to all the new changes that have come about since we last started in on a decision. That, you know, having it prepared. Aired between now and the twenty-third. Um. You know, without significant input. From the outside is going to be difficult. Um, and that, you know, if we get, if we were able to get a draft just in time for the twenty-eighth, it's really not. You know, Mr. Handler says it's not going to be really helpful to any of us to discuss it on the twenty-eighth if we're only just seeing it for the first time. Um. So from the, for the board, just just so everyone else is aware. Um, so Tuesday, October twelfth, we already have a meeting. We have five hearings scheduled for that evening. Um, and Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, we already have a hearing scheduled, and I believe. It's either two or three for that evening. I can't recall. So if the twenty-eighth, if the twenty-eighth is just too tight. Um. I think we could discuss the possibility of going to the fifth. Which would give us an additional week. Um, to put things together. Obviously, if we were to do that, we would need to push out the. We would need to extend the overall. Um. You know, the one eighty-day hearing. Uh, we'd need to push that out as well. But the twenty-eighth is a Tuesday. I don't know, you know. I don't know if pushing it to Thursday, the thirtieth is helpful.
Um. Uh, Art and Gwen, I think I would have to ask your input. Um, if. If you're saying there's a hearing on the fifth, if we. Push the deadline to the eighth, Art and Gwen.
So we have, so the the fifth is available.
Right.
Yep.
And and so then I'm, I'm, I would ask Art and Gwen, if you want to weigh in, if. Um, the apple, if you think that we could agree to extending it out to the sixth or the seventh or the eighth for the deadline. If we, if there were a hearing on the fifth to review the draft decision.
I, that's your judgment call, really, Stephanie. Uh, you know, we we know that the. The owner is. Wanting to move. Move this along, but um, it has to be in a schedule that you can work with, that you and. Mr. Hanlon, I mean, and Mr. Haverty and so on can and work with. So. You you make it, you make a decision.
I think it's, for us, it's okay. It's okay with you. Okay with you?
That's fine. We we could extend it, Mr. Chairman, until the the seventh or eighth, and have that hearing done on the fifth to review.
Mr. Haverty, does that extra week help?
Yes, it helps tremendously. Um, and if I could get the suggested revisions, you know. Probably at least a week before then to give me time to.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
That would be very helpful.
So so then we would be proposing to extend. The public hearing until Friday, October eighth. And then voting to continue. To October fifth. Um. So if we're going to try to do this final hearing, um, going through the. Draft decision. Would it be possible to start the meeting instead of at seven thirty to start the meeting earlier, just to give ourselves some extra? Some extra time? Do people make six thirty on the October fifth?
Uh, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um. Now with that in mind. Um. They being the ninth. Um. We plan on. Um. Yes, on Monday or Tuesday, we have time, Monday, Tuesday at ten, where we could just um. Have a quick coordination call to make sure that we're on track for getting the documentation together.
Mr. Chairman, which Monday or Tuesday would that be?
Oh, I'm sorry, September thirteen and fourteen. I think tomorrow is just a little too quick, so. So Monday, the thirteenth, I'm actually free pretty much all day Tuesday. A little more tied up.
Can you Monday, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Okay. Ms. Kiefer, would you be available Monday at ten?
I want to.
Okay. I will. See about getting an invite out for that. So then, um. So Mr. Haverty will revise the draft decision. To align with updated proposal requests waivers, the revised draft will be released publicly on or before. We said September twenty-eight. Does that? Work? All does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then the hearing to discuss it will be held Tuesday, October fifth. At six thirty PM. And the vote, we've taken at the end of that hearing. But if we go, and then we need to now expire the hearing on October eighth. If I'm here. So, um. I can have a motion to extend the public hearing period for Thorndike Place. Until Friday, October eighth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Now the second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rourke. Um, so a vote of the board, Mr. DuPont. Up, I see mouthing I, okay. Mr. Hamlin?
Hi.
Mr. Mills?
Hi.
Mr. Rourke?
Hi.
Mr. Revellak?
I.
Ford?
Hi.
Chair votes I, so we are extending the hearing until October eighth. And then if I could have a motion to continue. Uh, the hearing on Thorndike Place until Tuesday, October fifth at six thirty PM.
So moved.
Mr. Hamlin, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rourke. Uh, Mr. DuPont?
Hi.
Hamlin?
Hi.
Mills?
Hi.
Rourke?
Hi.
The Revellak?
Hi.
Mr. Ford?
Hi.
And the chair votes I, so we are continued. Um, on Thorndike Place until October fifth. And I will get back to um. To Mr. Haverty and Ms. Kiefer. Um. And others about setting up a call for Monday at ten AM to just coordinate. And make sure that we're getting everything together so we can stay on track. Um. No, just briefly, I meant to have this up already before we adjourn. This won't be helpful now, because all my dates are wrong. Um, but the. Just wanted to bring up the calendar for the board. Now I'm gonna have to adjust. Okay, so today was Thursday, September ninth, so that's done. So Tuesday, September fourteenth at seven thirty, we have hearings for twenty twenty A Lafayette Street, fourteen Nicod Street, and fifty-three Marathon. We are now continuing. For our vote. So that, um. Continuation till six, oops, until the fifth at six thirty PM, and then Friday the eighth is a vote of the public hearing. Tuesday, the twelfth, we have hearings for fourteen sixteen Edgerton Road, eighteen Heard Road, one twenty-five, one twenty-seven Webster Street, forty-three Fox Metal Lane, and twenty-four Ottawa Road. And then on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, we currently have hearings for five Chevyat Road and forty-three Cutter Hill Road, so that is our current schedule. Moving forward. Stop sharing that. Hey, well, thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting. I especially want to thank Rick Valavalle, Vincent Lee, and Kelly Linema for their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's reporting the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of the proceedings. It's our understanding that reporting made by ACMI will be available on demanded at acmi.tv within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town.earlington.ma.us. That email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. To conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rourke? Mr. DuPont?
Hi.
Mr. Hamlin?
Hi.
Mills?
Hi.
Your work?
Hi.
Mr. Revellak?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Chair votes I, we are adjourned. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
For.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Night, everyone.
Good night.